Good evening. It is now six o'clock and we will begin the Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 City Commission Work Session. Jason, who's?
Jared.
Jared, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
I'm looking to see if John is on.
John's somewhere.
He's not on, so Commissioner Minton?
Here.
We have four Commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Work sessions are an opportunity for the City Commission to discuss items in detail among ourselves and to interact with staff, consultants, and other presenters. No formal action may be taken by the Commission at a work session, but general direction may be given. Public comment is not permitted unless the majority of the Commission takes a procedural vote to allow it on a particular item. Commissioners, do we wish to allow public comment tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to allow public comment.
Second.
Jared, would you call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Comments will be allowed. I believe I noticed several people did sign in already. You will be limited to one speaking opportunity of five minutes and address comments to the Commission. The Commission will not respond to your comments. Jared, do you have the speaker list?
No one has signed up previously.
Is there anyone who would like to make public comment tonight?
There's no general public comment, but they can comment at each item.
Oh, yeah.
So what's happening?
Okay. Never mind. Our first item on the agenda is the Manhattan Levy Status and Upcoming Work Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Bill Heatherman. I'm the city's stormwater compliance engineer and I've been the city's project manager for the levy program. And tonight we have a status report both on the existing project as well as future work. Before we get into that, I wanted to introduce a few folks that are here with us this evening. So we have Shane Lyle here, who is the project manager with the Corps of Engineers on the Phase One project. There's another individual, Katrina Marx, who's the project manager on the Phase Two. She's on vacation. And we also have tonight Scott Mensing, who is the Civil Works Branch Chief with the Corps of Engineers. We also have Paul Puth with Olson Associates here in town. Paul's sitting back there. Paul has been a lead designer and integral part of a lot of the support engineering work that we've needed, including some of the projects, elements that we'll talk about tonight. So our presentation is in two parts. The Corps will be giving a broad overview and then city staff will follow up on some particular context. So I will let Shane Lyle come up here and give the first half of the presentation.
Thank you.
So, let's see, I think you can just... Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for having us here this evening. I'd like to give an update on the project, the levy build, and specifically the post-authorization change report. It's PACR, we call it in Corps of Engineers parlance. And it's the document that we send to Congress that documents total project changes and we're going to brief a new total project cost for the levy and the railroad components of the project. By way of agenda for my talk, I'll start off with a brief overview of the reason for the levy, some of the history of the flooding, the benefits of the levy system, and the different phases of the project. We've broken out the project generally into three phases: the levy build, a railroad structure, and then a 15th, 16th Street closure. We're looking at our accomplishments to date, 2023, 2024. We've got a lot of good news there. And we'll look at the PACR itself, explain that a bit, how we use it to convey the total project cost. And then we'll look at our cost estimate and history there and how we're trying to facilitate helping the city set up their finances for the upcoming work on the railroad portions. And at that point, I'll hand it back over to Bill. Okay, real briefly, we're in this, of course, we're in Manhattan, of course. You can see the levy system surrounding a good portion of the levy and also within relationship to the Tuttle Creek Reservoir. Looking at the need or the purpose for the levy system around Manhattan, there's the 51 flood, which we recall, and that resulted in the existing levy system being built by the Corps of Engineers in the, you know, in the early 60s. And then we had another flood of record after construction in 1993. Additional study by the Corps of Engineers determined that the levy system would benefit from an upgrade and that's what we're working on now. This is a bit of a zooming in again on the project. You can see the levy system. And I'd like to talk about the benefits and the phases a little bit more. So the levy system provides flood risk reduction benefits for about 10,000 people in Manhattan, surrounding area, and about $1.2 billion in, you know, commercial and residential development. The levy system reduces the annual flood exceedance probability, which is a, well, go from about a 1 in 150 chance per year to about a 1 in 300 chance per year of a flood of record event. Construction details, we've broken out the project into three phases. We have the ongoing levy build and then because, generally because of the railroad and the federal levy system are too large and immovable objects, we've broken out the railroad into different phases so we can address design challenges and questions that way.
Shane, can you just explain what the... Sorry. Can you tell us what the different colors represent and then the markers that seem equidistantly placed along the levy?
Sure. Yeah, that's a good question. So the color coding is related to different construction features of the levy. And like if you look down there, there's some red dots down to the bottom half. Those are relief wells. There's some light blue shading up to the north along the levy. Those are berms that are put in place for, as part of the underseepage berms. And then, and then the two stars are the railroad components of the levy. Up to the north, to the right, is the Union Pacific Railroad Closure Structure. It's a design structure. It's replacing a sandbag gap that's been used in the past. And then down to the bottom left is the 15th, 16th Street closures. And those will be addressed in a little more detail in the following presentation. Okay, so I'm going to get into the project details of the different phases and I'll cover Phase One and Phase Two. So this is Phase One, the levy build. We're making great progress. We're looking at the end of the project scheduled towards the end of September, September 22nd. About 95% complete. A lot of good work has gone into that. And in some of the, as I mentioned, some of the details down in the, along the levy system there, there's about 20,000 feet of levy rays, about a one to two feet of earthen levy rays. Underseepage improvements include 28 new relief wells, 8,000 feet of underseepage berms, and then we have seven newer modified gate well structures and then 10 or more utility relocations that's gone over the levy.
Can you explain underseepage, please?
So, sure. So when you have a flood, a flood event, you have water level that rises up on the riverside of the levy, that water level exerts a pressure that goes underneath the levy and it wants to come up on the other side. And so you have to relieve that pressure that's coming up on the other side. And you do that two ways, either by putting a well next to the levy and the water pressure comes up in terms of water flow out of the relief well or you have a berm that provides additional pressure on the top of the ground essentially and it dissipates that pressure laterally out and away from the levy. Okay, and then moving to Phase Two, we're getting into the Union Pacific Railroad Closure Structure. It's one up on the, kind of the right corner of your map there. And it's a, it's a designed structure to bridge the gap where the railroad goes through our levy. And you have to bring that in an event of a flood, you have to close that gap and bring that levy up to that, to that height of the levy. We're currently in design right now. We've actually been making some good progress with the railroad. We've got conditional approval on our design. We've got some design modifications that's allowed us to reduce the cost and scope a little bit. That's good news in coordination with the 15th and 16th Street closure. We've gone back and forth with the railroad three times this year on our latest design and I think we're getting pretty close. We're looking at engineering approval from the railroad in October with our design complete at the end of the year. And that lets us move into real estate acquisition.
Again, your very first bullet point is I don't quite understand reducing a closure from 50 feet to 100 feet. Is that a typo or...?
No, it's not. It's an initial design and when we approached the railroad with our design, we wanted a 100-foot width closure and we felt our design was better designed for a 50-foot closure and...
So the closure is from 100 feet to 50 feet?
That's correct.
Not from 50 to 100 as you have?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is a typo. Yep, yep. I think I've read that a million times and I think one way, yep. Appreciate that. So, so jumping back down into construction schedule and real estate. So that, once we get a design approval, that lets us move into real estate acquisition in August and then real estate acquisition in February 2026. That schedule's a little bit long. We're allowing some contingency there for dealing with the railroad. Their policies and procedures are different than ours and so it takes some effort to get those in place. And that'll also go into the construction and management agreement with railroad. And then we're looking ahead to awarding the contract in March 2026 and award in May 2026 and the construction in June 2026. And I skipped over the utilities budget. I just wanted to point that out, that that's still ongoing. We're working on the real estate acquisition of that and it could, it's one of those things that could throw us a wild card, but we think we've got it managed at this point. Yep.
NTP?
Notice to proceed. Okay, so going from the project details, I want to run through the project update, accomplishments to date, largely construction progress last year, 2023, 2024. As I mentioned, we're making good progress with our subcontractor, ESI. We're nearing completion. We see the end, light at the end of the tunnel here in September. I won't belabor some of the examples there. I think Bill's going to go through some of those details with his presentation. We're receiving credits from the city for LERDs. That's lands easements, relocations, and right-of-way and disposal. It's part of the city's cost share agreement. And then we've recently awarded a contract to Affinis, one of our AEs, to do the O&amp;M manual. And then as I'm going to mention, we've recently submitted our PACR and I'll give you an update on how we're using that to convey the new total project cost to Congress. Budget-wise, with Phase One, we're doing quite well. I think the budget's fiscally healthy. The city's doing a good job managing their portions of it for sure. And I think we may have potential savings at the end of the project of about $2 million out of the entitlements account that can be applied elsewhere. So that's good news. And Phase Two, we've got key milestones with the railroad. We've submitted our 90% design. We're ready to move forward and waiting on the railroad to finish that. Okay, moving into, from construction to cost and cost updates. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the PACR, the post-authorization change report, and give us a background of why we're using this to convey it in terms, we're talking in terms of total project cost. So when we have a project like Manhattan, FRM, it's directly authorized by name in legislation. And when you have a project that's authorized that way, it's limited to a total project cost. It's called a 902 limit. It's set up in the, in the Word of 1986 Water Resources Development Act. So the 902 limit does allow for some cost exceedances. On a project this size, there's design uncertainty once you go from feasibility to pre-engineering, design, construction, and in construction. A project this size, you just can't nail it down exactly. So the 902 limit allows for about a 20% change in inflation and then any additional studies or modifications that may come up along the way. So that's essentially what's happened at this project at Manhattan. We've exceeded our 902 limit largely due to the railroad closure structure, which changed from a sandbag gap to that design-constructed structure, utility relocations, and then design comments and negotiations with the railroad as well as inflation. So once we exceed that limit, we need to write a PACR that's submitted to Congress and they use that for authorization in our legislation. So, and then generally the PACR includes some other economic studies on some of these components of the project. And so in this case, the PACR is required to obtain the full benefit of the project. Okay, getting back into the numbers here a bit, we're looking at a history of our cost estimates and for us, the working number or starting point is that fully funded estimate in fiscal year 19. That's our $30 million starting fully funded project cost. And we exceeded our 902 limit, as I mentioned, with the railroad closure structure, the utilities, inflation. And we had an initial first draft of the PACR that had a number that pegged it at $43,700,000 or so. The city gave us an approval letter for that. And in the interim period where we were revising the PACR, getting comments from our chain of command, we received some new design information that allowed us to update the PACR and we increased the cost to the present value of $46,200,000 or so. And that includes additional railroad contingency for the stop log in 15th and 16th Street. So with the $46 million, generally the levy is $32 million and the railroad components are 14. And looking at the cost share, so the federal government is responsible for 65% of the total cost. And then the non-federal sponsor, the city of Manhattan, is responsible for 35% of the cost. And that 35% of the cost is broken down into a cash allocation and then the LERDs, which are the lands easement, relocations, right-of-way, and disposal. And those make up about $6 million in cash and $9 million in LERD for that $16 million total federal sponsor cost. And then also, before I shift off to this slide, I'll give you a brief update on the status of the PACR.
Can I make a clarification real quick?
Yes.
So the city of Manhattan, to date, or as part of the 2019 Project Partnership Agreement, has paid $5,355,000 in cash?
That's correct. I've got about almost six or so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then we're expected about another 4.4 million, 4.3 million moving forward?
Yes, and if we, looking ahead, if we kind of, based on the cash contributions, the total LERDs to date, and depending how, it'll change depending on how many LERDs we have at the final end of the project on what our cash contribution is. So right now, if we use this example, I think the city would owe about $850,000 to meet this full new $46 million cost. We're not expecting to ask for any cash this year or next year and we'll see how the project goes.
I should say, we'll get into some more of the city financing part in the second part.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. So jumping back to the legislative update. So the PACR has been reviewed and approved by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Headquarters and that's been submitted to Congress. There is a draft that's in the Senate right now that includes the total project cost and the Senate's working with the House to come up with a final Word of. Once that Word of is passed eventually, we think later this year, this fall, that gives us the authorization to ask for the additional funding. And that additional funding would come in the form of a new appropriations bill most likely. And also to help facilitate the city's financing with their finances, we've transmitted a financial update letter to the city that outlines the budget numbers and the anticipated schedule with the legislative approval. And Bill will speak to that as well into his presentation. So I think that's it. Any questions so far? I would like to thank the city and the sponsors. This project's been run very well overall. When we look at our, at a lot of our different construction projects and we'll pull on Manhattan as examples for some of our other projects. And so we appreciate that.
And so Shane will be here at the end of the presentation for any combined questions that we may have. So Shane covered quite a bit of high-level information and we can touch back on several of those items as we go. But the second half of this presentation is to put some of this into the context that we as a city, as the local owner of the levy and as sponsor of the project, have as part of our duties and activities. But just to reiterate again, the big project that you all have seen underway the last three summers is what we're calling Phase One or Phase 1A. And that is nearing completion. By the end of September is when the substantial completion is. There may be some follow-on work for restoration items here and there, but for all practical purposes, end of September is when we get the keys to our new and improved levy. And I'm glad that you asked the question about underseepage because actually that's kind of the thing we try to explain a lot. Levis don't usually fail by water going over the top of them. Much more common is structural and foundation issues with the results of underseepage. Letting the water pressure relieve itself is fine, but when that water's carrying sediment and soil from underneath your levy, you can imagine it doesn't take very long for that to become a problem. So one of the lessons learned over many decades of levy experience is to really pay attention to that underseepage control. And when we look at the actual activities that have occurred on the levy, there is a raise, especially on the Big Blue River part, but an awful lot of that activity has been what I'd call strengthening work, just making sure that we have the resiliency built in deep to the levy when we face that, when we face that event. The contractor has been excellent to work with, has really handled a lot of issues and been very cooperative. So we're very pleased to see where Phase One project is landing. Tonight I will talk about the 15th and 16th Street Railroad Closure that's been discussed and then talk about how our participation and activities coming up with Phase Two, which is the Union Pacific Stop Log Gap. And then we'll discuss some financing. I was also going to explain a little bit, on that stop log, I think you may or may not have an idea of what that is. But basically, these are 50-foot-long steel beams that we will drop into place with a crane that fit into the slats on that opening of that structure. It's a pretty substantial activity anytime that we choose to do that. And of course, the railroad will have to cease operation while we're doing that. So it's quite a, not all parts of this levy cost the same per foot. This is the key location, is the railroad stop log gap. But as you can see, the Phase 1A is nearing completion. We were happy to get folks back on the trail this summer and that end of September is when we'll be able to get the rest, the rest of it up and running. We accomplished some major betterments as a part of that project. So a betterment is an extra piece that the city pays 100% of the cost on. And at Hayes Encasement, the major flood control structure that was built there is a tremendous widening of the ability of flood flows to go through that area and that's all part of our downtown east and west master planning. So that has been a big accomplishment. We also achieved some long-deferred riprap maintenance. All of the riprap from the 60s had started to break down and that was work that was the city's maintenance responsibility but was accomplished in conjunction with the levy project.
What is riprap?
Big heavy stones. So if you get out, if you're out on the linear trail and you start at Temple Lane and start winding your way counterclockwise, you'll see the various locations where there's the big blanket of rock. And if you had a picture of what it looked like before, it's about twice as big, so. And then a lot of work with our Parks Department on restoration and trails. And so as we move into Phase Two, which is the railroad stop log gap, that clearly grew in scope and complexity as the design advanced and as working with the Union Pacific went along. I will tell you, early in the negotiations, as it was indicated, the Union Pacific owns 100-foot of right-of-way and they have been there longer than the levy has. So they predate any rights we may have. And their first negotiating position to the city was, clear us. Just stop on either side and give us a 100-foot wide gap and you figure out what you do in the middle. We'll work with you on some details of what that might look like. That would have been large enough for three tracks sometime in the future, plus access road. Their position also was, this is a critical railroad line. We cannot be out at all. No stoppage, which would mean building a shoe-fly track around our work zone, which is quite expensive in and of itself. It took a lot of determined negotiation on a lot of parties, including city legal staff, to get to a point where we could talk about a different approach. And that is what the Corps has designed to, and that's what we'll talk about tonight, is the three elements that allowed us to move that negotiation forward. And those three elements were, they did agree to drop down from 100-foot wide to 50, which allows them the option of adding a future track at their own discretion. They wouldn't have to rebuild the stop log gap if they ever brought a second track through. And they agreed to a work outage of less than 24 hours, but it is just enough to bring some precast elements, drop them into place, and do the rest of the work with shoring around them. So we have one big day and we'll let you know when that happens. It'll be quite the, quite the workday. And then the last element of that is, is that they required that we close one of the two low-volume crossings, 15th or 16th Street. They have a master plan of reducing low-volume crossings. That's not an unusual request for them to press forward when they have the opportunity to do so. And we'll talk a little bit about how that plays out in this location. So these are, these are just some glamour shots of the levy as we bring it to a close and it just illustrates how many different types of work and components have been part of the project so far. So 15th and 16th Street Railroad Crossing, that was not part of our original plan for the levy, but it came about as we worked through the negotiations with the Union Pacific. And again, their rationale is it improves safety, reduces maintenance burdens and their national strategy is to reduce low-volume road crossings and consolidate whenever they have the opportunity. When they presented it to us, it was a discussion as to one of those two locations to be closed. And in order to close, we had to build, we have to plan for an access drive to connect so that all the property owners continue to have access. And unrelated to the Union Pacific's demand, but a design issue that was becoming clear is this location, 15th and 16th, is the upstream... is this location, 15th and 16th, is the upstream end of the levee system. And through the additional hydraulic modeling that was done by the Corps of Engineers for Final Design, they realized that we needed a tieback section, a little extra wing to provide another foot of flood protection height, about another 1,500 feet further upstream. So that was an issue that we already had, that we were working on, and I'll show you how that plays out. So this all converged into a set of design and discretionary decisions of the city as to what we would do here. And after looking at the design options, public work staff recommends that 15th Street remain open and 16th Street be the one closed. And we'll talk a little bit about why that recommendation is made. It does improve safety. It does reduce future maintenance, but it does have impacts to property owners, both be reflected in easement acquisition and opinions and thoughts about the desirability of the project. And we can just explain the rationale that we have. So this picture is the two crossings. The left-hand side is 15th Street looking south. That's aggregate surface, somewhat narrower than 16th Street. And then on the right-hand side is 16th Street, which is an asphalt surface. It's more of a built-up oil-and-rock-type surface that's grown over the years. It's not in the greatest condition. Both of these have drop bars with lighted warning devices in place. And the one on the left is the one we proposed to leave open. The one on the right is the one we proposed to close. So this is a map showing the same area. 15th Street is now on the right-hand side of this exhibit, and I'll skip the cursor here. So this is 15th Street, which would remain open, would have some improvements to the condition of the crossing itself. 16th Street here would be the one that's closed. And then an access drive would be built to connect the two. Another key part of the construction is, you know, if a truck gets in here, it's got to get back out. So we have a turnaround area that's large enough for a semi to be able to get in and make a turn and come back out. The city already had right-of-way for a portion of this access drive, but on the lot that's called Track Two, we would need additional and do, and have a shed that would need to be removed. We are skirting that roadway in next to the main building that's located. The numbers here, 1, 2, 3, and 4, are the four property tracks that will ultimately be involved in negotiations on easements. To the left of this picture, there is an earthen berm going to be built out in a field that takes us to the end of this protection zone, the tieback levee. But we had a gap in the middle where all of these buildings existed that we didn't want to necessarily try to have to build a regular-type levee through there. That was identified earlier in the project, and it was going to be a long run of sandbags that would be manually placed across properties 1, 2, 3, and 4. In the, well, actually, just 1 and 2, in the event of a flood fight. The levee system currently ends right here at the edge of Track Three. When the opportunity to build an access road first came up, we've attempted to try to combine that, build that road up a little bit higher so that we would not need to extend sandbags in that location.
So the, the stop log gap, that goes perpendicular to the railroad track? Is that right?
Yes. So back over on the, in the other location, on the Big Blue River at 15th Street, if the railroad's coming through like this and the levee's like that, then the stop log is in the line of the levee.
Right.
And closes off the tracks perpendicular.
What about here?
Here, so this is, in this case...
Is there not one here?
There's not one here.
Okay.
This, this is much, this is more just a roadway crossing issue.
Okay. And so this came up because of the negotiations to shut down the railroad on the east side?
Yes.
For that? Okay. Got it. I was trying to figure out why the heck we were putting a gap here, but yeah, now it makes sense. Thank you.
Not to confuse issues, but at 15th Street, there is a little bit of elevation difference that we will have to use some stop log, or some sandbags on, but it's literally like one foot. So it's just a row of sandbags. It's not in the same realm as the, as the major crossing. I'm going to stop there because I know that was an awful lot to take in. I just want to make sure we have the general idea here.
I would just reiterate, 15th and 16th are only involved because the railroad desires them to be involved. We didn't jump down here and suggest these things. If we're going to inconvenience them and negotiate on the east side of town, this is where they wanted to come for a closure.
So one key part of this discussion is which of those two intersections would be recommended for closure. And we did basically a pros and cons matrix on those that really involved needing to get deeper into design as well to understand what the railroad themselves would require at either location. The shortlist is 15th Street provides an open direct access to Fort Riley Boulevard. It's easier navigation in and out. However, the 15th Street crossing itself would require a little bit more physical upgrades than 16th would because of its width. Navigation of, around the building, and this says Track Three, it's really on Track Two. The navigation around that existing building is an issue in either event. It's kind of a tight pinch. And there are service utilities and various utility-related items that were kind of awash in terms of choosing between one intersection or the other. There will be easements that need to be acquired, and under the Corps of Engineers federal regulations, there's a very structured process for that, including the determination of fair market value. So it's a very formal process governed by the Uniform Act, and the city does take the lead on acquiring those easements. This exhibit is just to kind of illustrate why that truck movement works. So 15th Street, even though the roadway at the railroad doesn't seem as substantial, that is where you actually have an intersection out onto Fort Riley Boulevard. So trucks that enter can take a straight shot and then do all their turning in one area. And then we kind of illustrate that if a truck got all the way back in there, they need to be able to get in and back out and come back out again. Where you see the number five, that's what you have to do if you're leaving 16th Street open, is you have to get down that very narrow roadway fair lane. It's really more like a slightly extra-width alley. And so you have to make a lot more turns just to get there. And so we thought we could clean up the navigation issue better by handling the issues with leaving 15th Street open. So that, that's the rationale that led us to that decision-making on 15th and 16th Street. We can talk about that more now or later, but I just want to kind of bring back to the bigger picture with the city's overall levee duties. So as Shane indicated, there's this acronym LURD, Land, Easements, Right-Aways, Relocations, and Disposals. Those are basically the activities that we, the city, are responsible for getting clearance on so that the project can proceed. Our costs are then credited towards the, towards the payment and reduces the amount of cash that we would otherwise be required to spend. So whatever we spend on easements or right-a-ways is part of our match. It's just the mechanics of how it gets accounted for are a little different. And per our project agreement with the Corps, we're obliged to obtain all of those. We did that process on the Phase One project. There were an awful lot of tracks that were acquired. The council was pretty busy for a couple of years with hearing items. We have fewer tracks remaining, but probably some more complex cases in Phase Two. So that, that'll be the slight difference when we do the process next. And the Corps of Engineers is very close to giving us the approvals and has given us some of the advanced approvals to begin the former right-of-way acquisition process. We're also responsible for clearing utility conflicts, and there is a fairly significant long-distance fiber optic line at the main Union Pacific site that will involve its own process of negotiations. So starting this fall and into 2025 and into 2026 will be when we kick into high gear with what we need to do for those acquisitions. For financial considerations, the expenditures and the financing for Phase 1A are largely complete. There's a reconciliation phase that'll still play out. We have turned in most of our credits for what we purchased and expended. We have a little bit of remaining credits to turn in. The financing for Phase Two, and what we've called Phase 1B, which is the 15th, 16th Railroad Crossing, there will be action steps coming forward to you as a commission, prepared by finance to handle the bonds and the temporary notes needed for that. But we're really waiting for the congressional authorization as well. The Congress needs to free up the big dollars so that we can continue forward. And the financing has been primarily through stormwater utility fees, including surcharge on the stormwater utility. The Phase One project did have some other funding sources allocated. And the ultimate way that all the financials will be handled will be part of the CIP process. So we're not, we're not proposing a final financing scheme today. We wanted to make sure you're aware of the project status. There's a lot of numbers that swim around, and they get sliced up in different ways and presented at different times, so it can be a little hard to kind of get a key dashboard clear. This form of numbers is one that we came up with just to try to get the big picture. What we call the Group A, which is the project that's close to completion, bottom line, about $32.5 million is the expenditure there. Actually, as the Corps' number was a little bit less, we think it'll slide in a little under that number. But this was the official budgeting number that was used at the start of the year. Our ultimate share on that would be $11.39 million. Group B, which is the projected and allowance for all the railroad-related items, that's a much bigger unknown, quite frankly. We still have some very major negotiation hurdles to clear. The Corps, because they didn't want to go back to Congress again, wanted to be very conservative. And so the number, and we believe they are, the number they've developed is a protective, hopefully, higher-end estimate, but it clocks in at $13.7 million, and our share of that would be $4.8. And when I give you those city shares, that's regardless of whether it was cash or LURD credit. That's just the amount total that we would be budgeting. So if the grand total ends up at the authorized amount of $46.27 million, which we hope it's less, but if it landed on that number, then our share is 35%, or $16.2 million. And so I will ask Rebecca to step up here. If you want to, or if you want to just say a few words about a little bit of a snapshot of where we at on city financing, and again, tonight's purpose was not to bring you a specific financial plan for the Phase Two, but to just give you a sense of where everything was at.
Appreciate Bill's two slides here. Obviously, the first one is more in line with where the Corps is. Rebecca and our finance team put together this to give you a better idea of just where we're actually at, not necessarily in theory, but where we're actually at. We do see the betterments in this at 100% to us. That was an item that was talked about quite a bit at the onset of this project. I think it was sand boils came up quite a bit in terms of descriptions of, if we don't do these things, we really subject ourselves to some impacts to high water up against the levee system itself. There are more educated people in this room than I, if you want to get into some of the betterments. But I do believe they've put Manhattan in a great spot to move forward with the flood fight as we will inevitably see the blue and the Kansas at levels that we're not very comfortable with. We know that will happen. Revenue-wise, that surcharge year-to-date, we're over $2.6 million, and that current surcharge is $2.25 per ERU. And Bill, you can explain, or Brian can explain what an ERU is. But it has to do with your square footage of your home, square footage of your parcel?
Yeah, on the, in the stormwater utility, we use the term ERU for equivalent residential unit. And so for all residential, you pay one unit per residence. But then that average is then applied to commercial so that they're paying proportionally based on impervious surface. And so we go through the process of calculating, for example, how many ERUs, you know, a large commercial site would be. And then that's what their annual bill is based on, or their monthly bill is based on.
Any questions on the financing to date from the commission? We recognize the UP scenario is not ideal, but I don't think leaving that gap for sandbagging is ideal in any shape or form. So getting that back to a point where it's a consistent levee is our desire. It has been from the beginning. As Bill said, they're just a tough entity. The first presenter said an immovable object. I chuckled a little bit because UP is an immovable object, not only physically, but yeah, they're tough to negotiate with, so.
What if we say no?
Yeah, and we can expand into that, obviously. You know, you do say no. They say no, and we're back to that gap. There are risks associated with that. We can talk through those if you'd like.
Is there a way that we could do this without closing the crossing?
That would not be a prudent approach to take, given the expenditure we've made on the rest of the levee. We're already, we have about a three-foot rise in the levee height there. We were already at about the maximum height to do a stop log type closure, sandbag-type closure, just the massive amount of sandbags that are required, the risk that's present. It would not be an acceptable recommendation to try to protect that type of structure with.
But I meant the 15, yeah, the 15th Street, 16th Street closure.
Oh. The risk there is the Union Pacific snaps back to their original requirement, which is redesign for 100-foot-wide gap and do so with no outage whatsoever in the track.
Is that even physically possible?
Well...
Commissioner, it's physically possible. It's just expensive. You're talking a magnitude of factors of three or four from what Bill has laid out with the financing plan.
So the $46.2 million would, was, I believe, and I'll confirm this, in theory, that had a contingency if we had to, but it's a bare contingency. If we stick with the plan that we've worked out, we're hoping to see the savings at the end. But that's also, the other issue is if you try to leave 100-foot opening, you can't do it with a single stop log. You have to have gates in the middle, so you have to assemble stanchions. And even though these stop logs are designed to core standard, that's not nearly as comforting as a big mound of dirt. And so these things are watched closely during flood fight. The more you lengthen that gap unnecessarily, the more risk that we would be taking on for many, many decades.
Okay. And can you explain the no-service outage? Like, how would we do construction? I'm assuming, that's for construction, right? Or is that at all, like, if we have a flood, they don't want? I guess I don't understand that phrase or piece of logistics.
So if you were to attempt to try to build this structure here without causing a service interruption, you would basically have to do like you do on an interstate and build a little, a little shoe-fly around your work zone that you would only be using for that period of time that you were doing the initial construction. So you'd be out there laying a parallel track
Right.
at some distance offset. And you'd have to breach the levee that much wider to have room. It'd be a complicated ordeal.
Okay.
So they're giving you 24 hours to interrupt their services, is that right, while that work is being completed?
Less than 24 hours.
Less than 24 hours? Are we concerned about that timeframe, and then what are the potential risks if we can't hit that timeframe?
So actually...
Scott, would you, do you mind?
So Scott Min- So Scott Menzinger here with Corps of Engineers has actually been involved with the Kansas City Kansas Levees Program, and they have some similar type issues. So I'm going to let him address that.
Yeah, Scott, can you keep in mind, we're not engineers? So just like, but at that level for me.
Right.
Like I'm five.
Can you restate your question?
Uh, I was asking about the risk associated with that, that shortened timeframe. It feels like, you know, I think we all know construction, don't always run according to plan. And so what our potential risks are on that, that timeframe that we have to complete the construction without creating more of an issue. And that might mean more, mean what the financial risks are with the railroad if we can't hit that timeframe?
Right. So twenty-four hour, in my opinion, twenty-four hours for this closure should be sufficient. It's tight, but when you, the amount of planning that goes into hour one on that twenty-four hour outage is, it's a year. And so you typically will know every potential out, you know, risk prior to even putting a shovel in the ground. There will typically be multiple pieces of backup equipment. But the way this particular structure is designed using a precast, so what needs to be installed is built offsite and we truck it in, drop it in with a crane. There's some foundation things we need to, to install first, but generally speaking, twenty-four hours is a pretty large outage in the railroad world. If you want to get a sense, YouTube, UCAS, Kansas City District, KC Levees, we built two closures that are about twice this size. Same time, both of them simultaneously on each end of a bridge with trains above us in twelve hours. So it, it can be done. It just takes a lot, a lot of coordination, which the railroad will be there with us during that, that portion. But yes, there is a risk. We just try to, we do everything we can to mitigate those risks upfront before we put a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, these, these are coal trains going to Evergy, right? So is Evergy part of the discussion?
The, the railroad handles their, their customers. We, we don't really get into that part.
Bill, would we envision an agreement that would involve the railroad at some point?
Yes, there will, as I understand it, there will actually be two agreements that are ultimately brought to the commission. One is like a construction agreement and the other is like a long-term operation maintenance with easement. So there'll be some very formal documents that go along with this agreement with the railroad. And I just want to say that, that, you know, for the city to undertake an engineering work like this on our own would be very daunting to have the, you know, the Corps of Engineers in the lead, and they will be leading that contract item. At that point, they and their experts are in charge and we're just there for the ride. So we talked a lot about levy tonight. I know you have other topics. So just real quickly, the, the kinds of things that you'll see come before you. There is an exchange of letters that is planned for a fairly near term agenda item. Basically, the key items that were presented tonight are in the form of a letter from, from the district commander in Kansas City. And there's also a letter in response prepared. That was the best way to kind of formalize that understandings at this point. We do have an amendment with Olson to complete the fifteenth and sixteenth railroad crossing design. That'll let us finish answering some of these questions that might still be pending and get on to right away negotiation. SMH is another local consultant that did all the negotiations for us on the first project. They've engaged to help us with all the right away negotiations we have. And then at appropriate moments when we have action items related to financing and bonding, you'll see those as you would with other capital improvement projects. And then there'll be an awful lot of property acquisition agreements that come in and as a cluster sometime next year.
Could you go back to the stormwater mess, managed stormwater fees that are coming in, in the slide before?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're seeing. Yeah. So we're seeing is, is that three years, twenty-one to twenty-three, or is that two years?
I believe it's three.
What?
Three.
Three years. So so we're only seeing about eight and a half. Eight and a half hundred thousand, you know. So it would probably take us quite a while to pay for that out of stormwater management and we do other things out of that too.
This surcharge is, is specific.
Is specific, is dedicated. Okay.
Bill, can you go back to the slide that showed oh, the property acquisitions that we'd have to do and that one? Can you, can you talk, so can you talk a little bit more about what, what is going to happen to those properties?
Yes, I want to be a little careful in that we don't have final design.
Okay.
And there's a very formal process associated with right away negotiations. So we have to take, you know, things at kind of just a very high level. But Property Four is a landscaping company and has some nursery operations. There'll be some space taken off the corner of them to allow for grading in the driveway. Property Three is a private residence. We own the right away in front here, although it's not historically been used as a street. And so there'll be a, a change that's apparent. Property Two is a, a construction company that does operations, storage there. There will be a noticeable amount of land required in order to accommodate, accommodate the access drive and some alterations of operation. They also office on another building on the other side of the railroad tracks. So there's an inconvenience to them associated with that closure. And then Property One is a warehouse storage facility and they do have not a lot of traffic, but when they do have traffic, it's semis. So it's important to bring, be able to bring a, a small semi in and get back out again.
One and two today use sixteenth?
One and two today use sixteenth exclusively. There's no interconnection and three and four use fifteenth street exclusively and would continue to do so. And all of them would use fifteenth street after the project. There's about fifty to sixty trips a day, so about twenty-five to thirty in and twenty-five to thirty out combined between the two locations. It's a fairly low volume.
So really, what, like, the inconvenience for Property One, you said they, they have some offices on the other side of the railroad?
Uh, Property Two.
Property Two, okay. Okay. So they, they just cross over the railroad and get to those offices over on Fairlane? Cause there's no access to Fort Riley Boulevard using the sixteenth street crossing.
Well, you have to jog over. You have to come up to Fairlane and get either to Delaware or fifteenth street to get out.
Right. So I mean, that isn't necessarily, isn't a, a direct. Yeah. I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Property Two has a, there's a, a long shop that sits along that. Is that right?
It's a, it's a shed, three sided shed.
Okay.
With the closure of fifteenth, no, sixteenth, would people still be able to walk across the tracks there?
No. And we would, that's not, that's not even a soft no, it's a hard no. Pedestrians are not to cross the railroad at any place other than a public street crossing.
So how would that company access the buildings that are on the other side of the track?
They would come around to the fifteenth street. They would just have to jog around that block and back again.
Right, but they have buildings over here on the.
Their, their main office is on, their main office is on the other side of the tracks. This is a, a shop. They get some usage. And those considerations would all be taken into account during the appraisals.
Bill, go down the opposite scenario just for a second. If you did keep sixteenth open and you closed fifteenth.
So in that scenario, we would still need the access route because the folks on fifteenth street would need to be able to get to the other side. So we would still have to take easement and right away off of Track Number Two. Track Number Two, or the, the owners at Track Number Two would be able to go across, but ironically enough, the owner of Four also has an operation on the other side of the railroad track. So they would be the ones making the detour. So there wasn't a clear winner, winner on that. It, it, and in the end, we really, that wasn't the decisive consideration. The decisive consideration is that everyone can get to Fort Riley Boulevard better if fifteenth street is the one that remains open.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioners? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address any aspect of the levy improvements or the Phase Two railroad projects? Seeing no one, we will close public comments on this topic and move to our second agenda item. Twenty twenty-four second quarter mid-year visit Manhattan and economic development updates and twenty twenty-five budget proposals from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Smith, President, CEO, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, thank you, gentlemen, from the Corps. We appreciate your input. Sorry, Jase.
That's okay. Jason Smith, President, CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about our mid-year report as well as our budget request for twenty twenty-five. We are going to be a little disjointed tonight. Darren Soldan, who normally would have gave the economic development report, had something scheduled already for this week. So when the meeting changed, he was unable to accommodate that. So I'm going to try to do double duty tonight. I'm sure he would have done it much better, but I'll do the best I can. Before we start, I just, I wanted to do, take a little bit, do a brief introduction to what I know of as the history between the relationship between the chamber and the city and why we do some of the things the way we do it. And as well as the budget requests. And then, and then we have a number of members of our team here ready to give the reports on our, on our three organizations. So we have contracts with, between the chamber and the city in three areas. One's economic development. One is tourism and one is military relations. On the economic development front, city funds roughly forty percent of the total economic development budget. The rest is raised from the private sector, which we'll talk about in, in a minute. City funds most of the tourism budget. There's a little bit of revenue that we, that we make through a couple of our activities, but as a general, it's about ninety-five percent. Comes from TGT. They're about one third of chambers and cities that partner on activities across the country. So this isn't unusual, particularly in communities our size or larger. Here's an example of some chambers across Kansas. So if you look at Topeka, you look at Hutch, and you look at Olathe, those are three chambers like Manhattan that, that work with the city on all three of the active, or on both the activities, economic development and tourism. Lawrence, Overland Park, Salina and Emporia have a combination of two. So in the case of Lawrence, they do economic development with the city. Overland Park does economic development with the city. Salina and Emporia do tourism with the city. So it's a mix. I'm, I was laughing. You see one chamber, you've seen one chamber. Everybody's a little bit different. But just so you know, this is a standard, a protocol across the country and across Kansas. Topeka rolled all their programs back together a couple of years ago. And Matt Pavarnik is the CEO of that, of the Greater Topeka Partnership. And I've heard him say this publicly multiple times in, in meetings where he talks about, I think they feel like that consolidation has helped them in some of their efforts. And so he always says, you know, when people congratulate us, I think it's better to congratulate the communities that have the foresight to never split those things up. So the benefits of the partnership, number one and first and foremost is leveraging funding. So in the case of economic development, you get more than a dollar for dollar match to, for your economic development program, where if you did those things internal, you'd either be half as effective or it would cost you twice as much. And we have shared resources and staffs. We have one person who answers phones, one person who does finances, one. Instead of each entity having a marketing director, we have one marketing director. I mean, I think those things make sense for, in terms of saving funds. This business community engagement, I think, is a really important one. I came from Norman where all these entities were separate. And while, while we were all friendly and we all worked together on, on a variety of projects, it was, it was clear that each, that, that it kind of divided the community up. And so certain people supported the economic development group, certain people supported the chamber, and certain people supported tourism. And it was really hard to kind of get everybody together on, on big initiatives. And the other thing it does, it expands our partnerships with the city on other projects. So some examples of that, I know my predecessor, La Butler and Jason, worked very closely on downtown redevelopment. Actually, even before that, the chamber was instrumental in, when the, when the mall went downtown. I know, cause I still hear from people who aren't members for that. So, you know, we've been engaged in downtown redevelopment. We've, we've been engaged on a lot of the sales tax initiatives. Most recently, the chamber and a lot of our partners helped support and fund informational and educational campaign on the twenty twenty sales tax that has funded the infrastructure, economic development and housing. But, but we've also previously supported a number of initiatives in that as well. One of the things I'm most proud of that we've done here in the last five years was the speed at which we were able to respond to businesses that were forced to close because of COVID. In fact, I have a lot of chambers across the state who are jealous of how fast we were able to do that. A lot of that had to do with the relationship, but if you remember during that period, and it ended up, there were a lot of resources available to businesses during COVID. But for about two months, it was pretty questionable how businesses were going to pay their bills. You had, you had, you had utilities coming due, you had, you had product that you had to buy. We were able to get funds into businesses' hands through a loan program within two weeks from the time that we proposed it. So in March, we closed in March and we had funds in hands of businesses in that month to help them kind of make it through that period until there were more federal funds that were available to help them. We also worked with the county on another program that generated another two and a half million for grants for businesses during that period. Again, the relationship was the important part of that, the trust that we all have together. That was why we were able to get those out as quickly as we can. The last thing, and, and I think this is something that, that, you know, as new commissioners, I just wanted you all to be aware of. Through that period, the CVB, the CVB's funding was cut about a million dollars over those two years. So during the pandemic year, we got about half of what we budgeted for. The next year, we got about two thirds of what we previously received. And, and we were able to accommodate that through a couple of things. Number one, we just cut our costs. So we reduced our staff by half in that area. And number two, we were able to spend some reserves that we'd built up. Karen Hibbert was very frugal with, with her budget and it built up enough reserves that we could accommodate through that period. And so we didn't have to come back and ask for funds from other areas because we were able to, to accommodate. It did, it did slow us down in terms of our recovery. And I appreciate all the hard work Karen and Marcia did during that time because they were a two-person show. But, but again, because we're partners, we felt like we, we needed to, to take some of the brunt of that as well as, as a city. We also, at the same time, in twenty-one, reduced our ask in the economic development fund because at the time, there were, there were, there weren't any federal funds that were flowing to the city. And so we knew those funds might be important going forward. So there were a hundred fifty thousand we hadn't expended the year before. And unlike a lot of agencies, we gave those funds back. So, so again, because we believe the relationship is important. I'm gonna stop right there real quick. I should have had a slide here. I'm gonna go into a little bit on the funding elements, but any, any questions on that part of that process? So. And we do appreciate the long-term relationship that we have with the commission and with the staff and, and believe that it's had good returns, which we'll talk about in a minute. So on the economic development front, this is the mission of our economic development program per the contract. If you, depends on where you look, you see different wording on how this is spelled out. I put in red jobs because at the end of the day, that's all the things that we do in our economic development is, is to try to add jobs to the community. And, and this question comes up a lot about types of jobs. And I want to be clear, we're not saying that a certain job is more important than other job, or certain businesses are more important than other businesses. They're just different. And one of the things that we need to do as a community is make sure that we're growing the kinds of primary employers who are exporting products and services outside of the economy, because that brings in new dollars. So when we think about that, we think of basic or primary jobs, sell products or services to customers outside of a defined economy. In this case, economy. In this case, that would be the city. Then you have secondary income retaining jobs. Those are things like retail, where, so you have places to spend the money, right? Because if you didn't have places to spend it, those funds would leave immediately, and you wouldn't get the, get the churn that you get. You wouldn't, you wouldn't get the benefit as a city for the investment that you're making in those primary employers. So the types of primary jobs generally, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's some exception to this, but companies that export products or services, tourism-based, destination retail, so think, think amusement parks and Bass Pro, and those things that bring in people from, from a large region. Government employment, and then transfer payments. So think retirees, right? So they're getting funds from the retirement accounts, social security, those kind of things. That's considered to be new money into the economy. In terms of our history and, and the economic development, and this, I'm sure that it goes back further than this, but our records went back to, to ninety-five, where we, where we began the community partnership between the chamber and the city. We had the, the first sales tax passed during that year, ninety-five, that, yeah.
A quick question. Have you considered adding work-from-home employees in that?
We should. That would be considered a transfer payment, but that would be another example where you have the payments coming in
Yeah.
from alternate sources, for sure. Yeah. I should have, I should have pointed that as an example, but we will add that going forward because that, that is a good one. So the economic development sales tax first passed in ninety-five. My understanding is it was to try to attract Cessna, which we ended up losing to independents, but, but the sales tax was still in place. And, and we'll talk a little bit about how we've used those funds going forward. We had our first Advantage Manhattan campaign in two thousand and two. That's where the chamber went out to their private sector and said, we need private money in economic development. And they began raising money. And then the first iteration of that was about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And then we'll talk about how we ended up there. But, but another key point in our program's history was the Region Reimagine, when, which the implementation started in twenty twenty and expanded the relationship between the city and the chamber. So a little bit on the economic development sales tax history. This was MetaFab, which was passed in ninety-five. And you get all this in annual reports. The city does a great job in reporting where these funds are spent and, and how they've been spent throughout their history. Pull this straight off the website, if anybody's interested in seeing them for themselves. Over ninety percent of the thirteen million raise went specifically to companies for jobs projects. And I, and I owe an apology to our friends at Champion. I left the Champion logo off of here. They were actually the largest, they're actually the current largest job holder from that original fund. But there's about twelve hundred jobs that are still in place from the agreements that were made from the MetaFab fund, which is, is a pretty good track record in terms of, of what you're able to do, what the community was able to do from that fund. The rest of these are still in, in place and, and operating. In two thousand and two, the county passed an economic development sales tax. The way the, the way that works is there's, they are obligated to commit a certain amount of that to the cities and the county, which roughly fifty percent came to the city of Manhattan for economic development. About a third of the funds from that program were spent on jobs projects. About nine hundred of those still exist, or are, will exist soon. The three major projects out of that fund were MBAF. And so there's a sizable amount of funds spent on, on the, on securing MBAF, including a lot of the, the work in North Campus Corridor. Civic Plus, which still, even though they're not all in the building, they still have around two hundred and fifty people in Manhattan or in the Manhattan region working from home, as well as in the building. And then Metalarc was a recipient of that as well. So from just those two, from about the twenty years that those two funds and, and the projects that were completed there, you, you have a pretty significant return to the governing bodies from those jobs that are still in place. So the total property tax paid by those companies and the people, and the estimated property tax paid by the employees is, is around four million dollars to the schools, the county, the city, RCPD, all the, all the taxing entities, obviously Potawatomi and Raleigh County. The total sales tax paid to the state and the city and the counties are about five million. The city's property tax percentage of that, which is, includes Raleigh County, is a million. And then the sales tax estimated is around five hundred thousand. So the total revenue to the city, using the multiplier, and this all came from the city's return on investment model that we use when we are considering projects, is around two, two, two and a half million dollars a year. So pretty sizable return on about a fifteen-to-twenty-year timeframe of investment. In, in addition to that, you had the return of the Big Red One during that period. You had student enrollment hit all-time high, you had downtown redevelopment, and you had nearly four billion, with a B, dollars of public investment that was either scheduled, that had either taken place or were scheduled to take place in the region. By all accounts, you had a period of time, probably up until twenty fourteen, from about twenty, about two thousand to twenty fourteen, where there weren't many places in the country that were doing better than Manhattan economically. I mean, it was, it's remarkable when you look back on that. And I think sometimes we forget that. And I think it's important to, to remind ourselves that, somebody told me that, that there was a front page, and I looked for it, I couldn't find it, but there was a front-page article in USA Today in, I think, two thousand and eight or nine, that said Manhattan was the most resilient community during the recession. And that's because of a lot of work done by a lot of people to secure the economic development projects that happened, to, to secure a lot of the infrastructure work that was going on during that period. And I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to lose sight of the fact of all the good things that happened during that period as we talk about going forward. What happened at that point, and, and I've heard different people use different acronyms, but, but one person told me one time, we took a deep breath. There was a lot of, all that work, there was a lot of controversy through, through some of those things, downtown redevelopment, MBAF. We're not without controversy. And I know a lot of people, I know Jason Hildreth's worked extensively on those projects. But I think people were just, just ready to take a breath and say, okay, let's, let's relax for just a minute. And so we, we kind of changed our philosophy, started thinking about different ways. And, and I think rightfully so, based on all the positive things that happened over that decade and a half, is, okay, how do we start addressing some of these other issues? And we began a little less focused on jobs and more on quality of place. And so if you take a look at the economic development sales tax that passed in twenty twelve, about two percent of those funds were spent on jobs projects. The rest were spent on, on large infrastructure projects. And we started focusing on those big projects. That would have been great, but, but it's something that was, that was not anything of our doing. I think we always want to try to figure out whose fault this was. But, but we had these negative economic issues that happened, and no fault of our own. So the first was, obviously, we lost a brigade from Fort Riley. And just to give you an idea of kind of the impact that was, it's thirty-five hundred soldiers, fifteen hundred civilian employees. So think about the announcement that just happened in Caterpillar, multiply that by about thirteen. That's the negative impact that you have just by that action in the region. Additionally, just using the Army's own numbers, we've lost about ten thousand family members related to that, as well as related to family members aren't as anxious to relocate because of all the deployments that have been going on. We lost about three to four thousand students during that same period. So the, the fact that we have maintained sort of this stagnant level of population and jobs, and actually seen an uptick in, in wages, is pretty remarkable, based on some of the negative things that have happened. And I think it goes back to the four billion dollars that we saw on the last slide, that, that took place during that period. There's been a lot of construction. There's been a lot of big projects, MBAF, North Campus Corridor, the Army Hospital, that have really kept us moving at a time when other places might have really had a challenge. But I don't think that, but I do think that it's important to understand as, as you look at some of the budget challenges that have been going on, not just with you, but, but some of the other entities, that a lot of it does have to do with that, those negative economic indicators. It's important to understand that. The other thing that happened, that, again, no fault of our own, I think we were in pretty good shape to attract some office users, but COVID completely changed how the office market is. In fact, I saw a chart the other day that the national office vacancy has risen from twenty twenty, from twenty percent to twenty-five percent across the nation. And that's only expected to get larger as more leases expire and companies begin to consolidate operations as they have more people working from home. I think you are seeing more people going back into the office, but it's going to take a while to, to figure out what that's going to look like. So visited, in fact, I visited with La Butler about this last week, just to make sure I understood sort of what he was thinking during that period. And, and as, as we were seeing those negative economic indicators occurring, that was one of the reasons why we began the economic development strategy in twenty seventeen. And we raised the funds through our Advantage Manhattan to, to help make that happen. The city provided it some additional funding, and it was originally called the Greater Manhattan Project. It then grew into Region Reimagine, and was launched in twenty, I believe in twenty eighteen. So the, the, the four, the four elements of the Region Reimagine strategy were jobs, talent, entrepreneurship, and innovation. And so you're going to see a lot of what we talk about is under those four items. Again, as we began launching the Region Reimagine, through that period, as, as, as I mentioned earlier, we had about, for a period from about twenty, I see, two thousand, or ninety-five to, to twenty nineteen, when we began the implementation, the city's contribution to the economic development program was pretty stagnant, about a hundred fifty thousand a year. When we began the implementation, we came to the city for additional funding to help that. And, and you will talk about what some of those items were when we get to the budget request. And at that point, the city agreed to raise their commitment by about three hundred thou, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to four hundred ninety-three thousand. And so that's where we are today in terms of the, the makeup of the, the funding. I did make a mistake on this slide. We do raise over six hundred thousand dollars through the Advantage Manhattan program. Last year, when we implemented the, the loan program through Spark, which I think Stephanie will talk about, we got an extra hundred thousand commitment from the Greater Community Foundation. So we're actually raising seven hundred thousand dollars from non-city sources to match the four hundred ninety-three that, that you all provide each year. So the challenges that we have ahead of us, because I think, I think these are, and, and we'll talk about these a little more in depth in the economic development section, but growth statistics are, are what they are. And, you know, we, we, I was just in, at the largest retail trade show in the country, as we talked to developers about, about the community. And, and all the numbers that, that you see and that we've provided are, are readily available. And so when you have stagnant population growth, you have stagnant job growth, it's, it's a little harder to attract more corporate investment. And so we need to figure out a way, and we're working on, I think, some strategies that, that we hope that we can bring to you by the end of the year, that, that we think will help spark some of those growth statistics so that we can start getting attention from some of the larger retailers as we try to attract and retain more sales tax. We are really challenged, and, and we'll break this down more in the economic development section, but by business park, space, land, as we've seen a change in the kind of leads and opportunities that we have, the, the requirements for those opportunities are larger than they have been in the past. And, and we're continuing to try to find solutions to that, but it feels like there's always a roadblock. And so, but we continue to work on it. We'll, we'll update you where we are on that. And then the last item, just the leadership transitions. And I'm not indicating that any of those are good or bad, but for about a period of about twenty years, we had Ron Fear and La Butler and Kent Glasscock in his role at the university, and, and leadership roles with a lot of what we were doing. And all those, those three individuals are not in those roles anymore. And so while, while we do have, I think, good people and, and potentially good people that will be coming in here, it's just going to take, take some time to, to get used to each other and figure all that out. You don't have the same trust that has built up by working together for twenty years. And so we'll continue to, we're committed to making sure those, those transitions happen smoothly, and, and hopefully we can continue to, to achieve the same success we have historically. So real quick, I'm going to walk through the budget requests and then move into the economic development side. So on the economic development side, we are, we've actually decreased our request by eight thousand and eighty dollars. I should have put on there eighty dollars. There was a section, there was a little bit of funding that you all were passing through to the chamber to fund a program we called Knowledge-Based Economic Development. It was a formal collaboration between the University of the City and the chamber. With the changes that the university's making and how they're delivering economic development, I'll let them kind of bring that to you when they're ready. But KBED was dissolved, and so those funds are no longer necessary. So we took those out of the request. Again, the private sector matches seven hundred thousand, counting what, the new funds that we're getting from the community foundation. So over a one-to-one dollar match on that. In terms of the military relations, this is a program that was finalized or formalized in, in two thousand and six. The city funding at that point was forty thousand dollars. It stayed at forty thousand dollars until twenty twenty-two, when one of the commissioners asked why we never asked for any more money. So we asked for ten thousand more dollars. And so we have four primary funding partners in that. It's the city, Raleigh County, which gives some funding to, to our military relations program. The L.A. Brigade is, which is a group of private businesses and individuals who give money to the program. And then Advantage Manhattan comes in and subsidizes whatever's left in the budget. And so usually that's thirty to forty thousand dollars, depending on what we do in, in that given year. So those are the funding partners there. The mission of the military relations program per the contract is on the screen here. I, I like, the main, the main thing we try to do is strengthen the relationship between Fort Riley and the community. I always say, the thing we're trying to do is, is grow the mission, preserve the mission, and, and make sure that, that everything going on there, that, that what we need to do to protect and preserve those, we're doing as a community. And we do that a lot in collaboration with Junction City, but, but we also have our own program that we're real proud of. So the military relations budget request is, again, fifty thousand, which is a flat request. That's matched a hundred thousand dollars from those other sources that I mentioned. And then last is Convention Visitors Bureau. So I want to talk a little bit about this because while, while we're reporting on this was factual, the increase is not necessarily just a random number that we ask. So historically, when, when the TGT tax was passed for Manhattan, most, if not all, of those funds on an annual basis went to the CVB to promote tourism. And, and there is a, there's a statutory requirement that, that the city has to look at when they expend TGT funds and make sure that it fits in that statute requirement for promoting tourism in the community. And there's a lot of different ways to do that. But, but initially, it was all, it was a hundred percent put in the CVB. I think the first time, and Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first time some of those funds were peeled off was for the airport tower. And there were some funds used to help fund the airport tower. And then after that, there were some other funds that were pulled off to support the conventions, or the Discovery Center. And then eventually, the situation we are now is, there are some TGT funds used to fund the conference center, the turf at Annenberg Field. And then sixty percent has been what the, not a formal agreement, but generally considered the agreement between the city and the CVB to request each year for tourism promotion through the CVB. So we, since twenty seventeen, we have, you've worked with the city finance department, tried to get an estimate on what we thought the TGT would be for the next year, and asked for sixty percent of what those funds were. We have a CVB steering committee that we have established per our contract with the city. That committee weighs in on, on our request because it's, it's, that's what the requirement is per the contract. So they look at our budget on an annual basis. It's made up of hotel operators, restaurants, other people involved in tourism, as well as a representative from the city commission. We discussed last year the idea of not requesting additional funds. That committee was adamant that, that maintaining that sixty percent was important to their business. And so the chamber board complied with the wishes of the CVB committee, and we are continuing to ask for the sixty percent. So while it is an increase, and we'll talk about that dollar amount, the percentage of the TGT funds is an estimate, and that hasn't changed. We're still estimating a sixty percent amount. The other thing about the CVB committee that I think's important, they are independent. And so while most of the committees run through the chamber and, 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 I hate to use the word overseen, but the chamber is the ultimate decision-maker, the CVB committee, because of that contract, can weigh in on issues related to the TGT, regardless of the chamber board's position. And in fact, in December, the CVB committee made a statement to, to the commission that was opposite of the chamber board. So we allow them to operate independently because that's the way the contract reads. And so they're the one, they're actually the ones that decide how much we ask for on an annual basis. So the mission per the agreement with the CVB to expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. Marcia will talk about how they do that. So our request is one point six five million, which again is sixty percent. One of the things that, that we'd like to, to maybe think about going forward, initially, we're going to talk about it this year, but with the interim and all the things going on with the budget, we thought this probably discussion better to have later, is instead of trying to figure out what that dollar figure is on an annual basis, is just asking for sixty percent. And if there's additional funds that come in, the CVB would get those. If there's not addition, if there's less funds, then the CVB would eat those. And so that, that may be something going forward that, that at least the committee would like for this, the CVB committee would like for this commission to consider going the CVB committee would like for this commission to consider going forward. So. So questions on that before we move into the economic development section?
How much was the request last year?
One, one point.
One point three. I thought it was something like that.
One point two eight.
It was one point three eight.
Three eight.
And what, what are the plans for that, those additional funds next year?
I'll let Marcia address those going forward. It's, it's, it's to, but it'll all be spent on additional marketing opportunities for the community. So there's no, there's no additional fixed costs that, that will come into that. Okay, if there's any other questions, I'll, I'll go into Darren's report. And we do have other members of the economic development staff here that if you have specific questions related to their program, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to, to address. So we talked real quick about the, about, a minute ago, about the four items that are part of our strategy. We'll hit a little bit on each one of those going forward. We also had three priorities this year. These were chamber economic development priorities. Childcare, which has been something that our employers have identified as a challenge and, and wanted some, some broader community discussion about. And, and we have some, hopefully, really cool solutions that, that we're bringing forward over the next year or two. And then the industrial park, which we'll talk about later. But I do want to real quickly talk about housing, which again, as employers, we talk to employers about their challenges in retracting and retaining workers. Housing has come up more than once. I know as we've looked at some of our jobs, we've had people drop out because they felt like that, that they couldn't afford to move because of interest rates and the housing costs, couldn't afford to move. I want to give enormous amount of compliment to the staff of the city for the work they've done on that this year. And we're super excited to see what they're presenting, I think, next month. And look forward to helping however we can help start implementing some of those programs. So I want to talk first about business recruitment, because that's the most important, but that's sometimes a thing that most people are interested in. So we do most of our business attraction efforts through a partnership with Pawl County Economic Development Coalition. We call that the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. So if you go to our website, it's actually a separate website that's specific to, to companies and site selectors that may be looking at the community. It's got a ton of data on it. So if you're ever interested in, in, in data on, on the county and the metro area, there, there's a lot of it there. We, we do a few things through that program. One is we have our own marketing campaign, so it's electronic. And there's a lot of different forms that we take where we promote the community directly to companies and site selection people. We also are part of Team Kansas, which is a statewide coalition of economic development organizations operated by the Kansas Department of Commerce. And that allows us access to national events that we can go to with the state. And usually either the governor, the lieutenant governor goes on those trips, which obviously when you have an opportunity to be with the governor, lieutenant governor, tends to attract better kind of clientele than it could if we tried to do those things on our own. So we find those things to be not only productive there, but also building relationships with the state of Kansas. We're also members of, of a couple of groups. One, Site Selectors Guild, which is an organization of site selectors that we've been sponsoring now for a couple of years, and it's really given us some exposure to people that otherwise we, we didn't have exposure to. In terms of our prospect pipeline, one hundred percent of our nineteen leads this year have either been manufacturing, bioag tech, animal health or food, which means they're all industrial type kinds of facilities. So high base base, larger sites. We've not had a, an outside of market office lead either from the state or on our own in three years. So they've all been these kind of projects. Now, they're not what we think about the manufacturing from thirty years ago. These are, these are highly automated. They usually have some sort of R and D component with it, or quality control component with it as well as office. And so as an example, in the food, we had, we have a food lead that we got recently. It is very specific that they have an R and D component as well as a significant office management type component with that. And then the, the entry level jobs are, are twenty-five dollars an hour. So the, the day of low wage manufacturing jobs are generally over because those have either gone overseas or have been automated at this point. So most manufacturing tend to be higher wage than actually what we see in service sector. Of those nineteen leads we have, we've been able to submit on eleven of those, and we have twenty-three open projects right now. One of, one of the questions we get about sites is what about the business park? And I, and I think it's important to talk a little bit about what we have out there. So right now we have basically three sites, the largest of which is sixteen acres. That's that lot twelve. I want to talk a minute about, because it, it looks like when you look at the green, blue and red site as you drive out there, it's like, well, that's a large site. The blue, a number of years ago, was given, was sold to Sykes when they were, when they were located there in the call center for their future growth. They've since sold the building. We have tried very diligently to buy back the sites, but for whatever reason, we are not getting a great response from their now corporate to try to buy those back. And we have been trying very hard for about a year and a half now. The, one of the challenges we have as a state, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but when, when the Kilo decision came down a few years ago, the, the legislature immediately went in and said you can't use eminent domain for economic development. So we have no hammer to go into that company and ask them to enforce them to sell that back, even at a above-market rate. So as long as they can sit there, their property taxes a few hundred dollars a month, they probably, I don't know, I shouldn't, I'm not going to say. But there's probably a reason corporately why they're not anxious to sell it. But for the meantime, we have about twelve acres that is owned by an outside concern who has no interest in doing anything there. And then we have another entity that purchased fifteen acres about five years ago, actually purchased it about two years ago, that, that we're hopeful will do a project. But right now, we're just kind of in a wait-and-see mode. So we really only have three sites. The one, the green one on the north side, if you can kind of tell, it's got a, got a drainage that goes through it. So really that's not even one site, that's really more like two sites. But there's room for Florence to grow, there's room for Bev Hub to grow, and that's important too. And so they, they also own some of the sites next to them.
Jason, when you said that you've been trying to purchase Sykes, who's the we in that? Like, how does that?
Yeah, so we were just going to buy it back as the chamber just to be, just, just to get it done, right? And, and, and have it available to, to market again to companies. But we just, no, we don't make it that way. Yeah. So real quick, just to update you where we are on the business park. We have identified a funding source to purchase a large parcel on the west side of town. And we've been working with the city and the, and the county as well. And the county's shown interest in assisting with some of the infrastructure out there. We were about ready to pull the trigger on that when we discovered that we may have a power problem out there. So if you've, if you've read a little bit about the, the issue with the county and Evergy's line from the Ashland Bottoms to the Ogden Substation. Right now, the Ogden Substation is near capacity in terms of, of, of what they have available for additional customers. And so without some sort of a new feed into the Ogden Substation, we're, we're now limited on power as well. So we are working with the county and with Evergy and, and the landowners in the Ashland Bottoms to hopefully come up with a solution to get more power to Ogden. Because I don't know if that impact us at the business park? That impacts future airport expansion, that impacts Ogden expansion, that impacts Fort Riley's ability to tap into that, to the Ogden Substation, should they desire to do that for backup. So it's incredibly important for the growth of this community that we're able to come up with a, a solution on that. But, and we'll continue to work on that. One thing that is, I think, a positive, and it was a program that the commission approved in twenty-one, was a, a building that we copied from, from a couple of other communities in Kansas to incent spec building. And because we have lost some projects because we didn't have a building. And so there's currently a new one hundred and twelve thousand square foot industrial building under construction behind McCall's, the old McCall's building, that we've already been able to get into some projects potentially because it's being constructed. So, so that's really good and, and something that, that we're, we're happy with. I do want to say, you know, when you, when you talk about opportunities that we know for a fact of two projects that we're able to keep in the region that we lost because we didn't have either a facility or a site. And those were two we were able to keep, which is great. We don't know how many opportunities we've lost because we didn't, that we weren't able to keep in the region. So we do think that if we have these things in place, we will start to see a lot more activity, and, and we'll continue to work on that. In terms of announcements over the last three years, these are some companies that have announced in the community and/or located, and most of those have located. The one exception is Scorpius, just a real quick brief, because I know Jason provided you an update on this or, or you asked a question about it a few weeks ago. We have a non-binding letter of intent with Scorpius. That means we don't have any sort of formal agreement. That was a state project. The state does have a formal agreement in place. We aren't privy to what that is, but they are working with them on some, some timelines that they expect them to meet in order for that agreement to stay in place. And we're happy if that all happens and there's a project. We're happy to, to be here to, to work on a new agreement that we would bring back to you all to consider. In the meantime, the, they, they, they do not own a site in Manhattan. So the site that they potentially were locating on has been submitted on other projects. If we had another project came forward and, and it felt like that the funds that were set aside might be better suited for a different project, we would bring that forward, forward to you all to consider as well. So we, we don't have a formal agreement with Scorpius. We are not holding anything at this point because it's been long enough that, that, you know, it's time, we're, we're looking, we're not going to miss an opportunity because we're waiting on something that may or may not happen. We're optimistic, we're hopeful, but at the same time, we're also continuing to work on behalf of taxpayers. So any questions on that? Another part of our jobs program, and probably the more important part actually, is our business retention expansion program. George Cant leads this for us, does an outstanding job getting in front of our employers. I will tell you, and because I think it's important for you all to understand, because I've been in this business now twenty-five years. And when we hear a negative announcement, the first thing I always want to know is when's the last time we've talked to them? When, when Caterpillar made their announcement, I asked George, when's the last time we talked to him? And he said, three weeks ago, and they told us everything was great. So we, we, we are always in front of our employers. We can't make them be completely honest with us. And I, in that case, I don't know that the local people knew for sure anything that was going on. I think they were, I think that was all being decided in another state. But, but we are in front of our employers on a regular basis. We also are in front of our employer, of our headquarters folks. So in the last two years, we have visited either at the headquarters or in Manhattan, six of our largest employers, including a couple recently. Appreciate Commissioner McCullough, who sat in with us when we met with the Farm Bureau Financial Services folks who were visiting from Des Moines and got an update on about the hundred and fifty employees that they have still here that, that operate at the facility on the north side. Then about a month ago, we went to Topeka, met with the Midwest Health people who are the primary investors in Bev Hub and got an update on their, their operations and where they're headed. We also have some industry roundtables that, that, that we think are important to continue as we share information with our employers and the community. In terms of childcare initiative, I think most of you know by now, and I'd encourage you, we can get those folks in front of you to give more details. But, but we think this accelerator project is going to be a game changer and something that people are going to copy across the state. It's new and innovative. We don't know of anywhere else that this has happened. There's going to be six incubators for new childcare businesses that will turn over hopefully every one to two years that we think will finally start to make a dent in, in some of the needs that we have as a community. In terms of some of the other programs that George leads us on, we have our DIIB committee, Established Business Leaders, which is our, our older professionals, Hype, which is our young professionals, and now is up to nearly three hundred members, which I think is incredible. And then we work very closely with our military relations program to try to connect military people with our existing employers. Just real quick, in terms of our jobs update, we are down slightly this year compared to last year, which is pretty similar to what our regional peers are. I will tell you, twenty-three was pretty remarkable in terms of the growth. We were consistently three to five percent year-over-year growth. So I think it's probably just a flattening out of whatever, what we don't, we never really knew what caused that growth last year. And we haven't necessarily heard what has caused the change this year, but it just seems to be pretty consistent across the board in some of the other communities in the state as well. So. And our unemployment rate's up slightly, but still below three. Just briefly on some other projects to be aware of. KSU Foundation is, is going to have their formal, I think they had the ribbon cutting. They're going to have an after-hours where they celebrate the grand opening nineteen sixty Kimball. And St. Gordon has already moved in. And they will be moving in some other of their, their, what we used to call KSU IP, now is their corporate engagement. And Research Foundation will be moving in there as well. One of the other things that K-State launched last week, which kind of went under the radar, I think's important to point out, is the K-State Launchpad at the Edge. So they are going to set aside some property for the first time to allow startups out of K-State to launch in below-market rent, some cases free if it's something highly desirable. That's been a real challenge we've had, is trying to figure out some of these startups where they can locate in, in a reasonable cost area. And then another announcement that I think probably didn't get as much attention as it should. WTC announced a fifty million dollar investment in the community to get fiber to every house. So we are now going to be a fiber community, which is a desirable thing for cities across the country. And we're, we're obviously promoting that in the stay-at-home work, remote worker area. It's, it's critical. KSC Building is a building that we manage on behalf of the city. You all own it, we manage it. We're continuing to see companies expand in there. We don't really market it as much for new businesses because it's full. But here in the next month or two, we'll have another announcement of a company that's growing in that facility, and we'll be doing some renovations. MATC is a program, we continue to hope, to promote what they're doing with their programming, including Signing Day, which is a day that we go out and celebrate people who are going to college and technical careers. And so we've been sponsoring that now for two years. It's a fun event. I'd encourage you to go if you get a chance. We're also going to be launching some, some, a variety of, of promotions to try to get kids moving into healthcare and construction careers. Those are two areas that are really important to Manhattan. They're really important to quality of life, and, and we need to try to get more people in. As we expand our capacity in construction and healthcare at MATC, we need to find kids that can fill those, fill those efforts. I don't understand much of this. I said, I told Darren, I said, I'm, I'm not going to be able to talk much about it. I will tell you, because of MBAF, because of the Scorpius announcement, we have been able to grow our capacity in, in workforce training, in biosecurity, bio-manufacturing at both K-State and at MATC. And we have secure dollars, state and federal dollars to do that. So we are in a much better position today to attract those kind of companies than we were even three years ago when we got the Scorpius announcement. It's an incredible effort by multiple entities, and, and we're real excited about the future of that. Made for Manhattan is our talent attraction program. It's a program we launched three years ago, and it's, it's been really popular with our employers. We won a gold medal on that from IEDC. It also has been something that as a state has worked on their Love Kansas effort because we were one of the few communities that had already gone down this road for branding, branding our own community and, and providing a lot of the resources that they were providing, that they used a lot of our resources. And, and I don't think that's a secret, or don't think that's coincidence and they chose to launch that program in Manhattan because we had helped them a lot on that effort. And so I think that's an exciting program. I think it's exciting they chose Manhattan for that launch. And appreciate all the work that Allison Muth does in that effort for us. She's our Talent Strategies Coordinator as well as running Hype. And, and we're real excited about all the things that she's accomplished since she's been here. So with that, we're going to hear a little bit from a couple of our partners. Spark MHK, which is, Stephanie Pierce is going to come up and talk about entrepreneurship programming and then the Black Entrepreneurs of.
Jason, do you want to wait?
Which is Stephanie, yeah, go ahead.
We're going to take a five-minute.
Perfect. All right. And then I'll, we'll invite, we'll, I'll introduce, I'll let Stephanie just come up and introduce.
I'll have questions for you before I get.
Same.
Oh, okay. All right.
I know.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't see the signal.
Or Katie.
Or Katie.
Very good.
I was listening on the radio. I'm not even getting traded as another.
He was wrong.
Okay, Commissioners. All right, um, we're going to resume. Stephanie, bef- before you speak, I think there are a couple of questions for Jason.
I think Jason was going to answer questions after Stephanie.
So I plan to come back up after Sheila, and so I can do, we can do the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, we're going to resume our meeting at 7:55. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Stephanie Pierce, and I'm the Executive Director of Spark. Um, upon coming on board in this organization, a few months ago, we have really started to hone in on a strategy that helps create, attract, and grow startups and small businesses in the region, and we're really doing that by building capital, collaborating with partners, and cultivating startup activity. This really kicked off on the capital side, and if you remember last year, the city graciously capitalized the Elevate Community Micro Loan Program and made that initial investment into that program. That alongside the Empower Fund were launched in the end of 2023 and added to some already existing loan programs, including the E-Community Loans and Grow KS Loans. And so this has been meant to help start, uh, addressing that gap in funding for early-stage companies and those that are looking to grow to the next level. So we've begun to see traction along this, but we're also looking towards the future of how can we continue to address this need in creating an Evergreen Equity Fund and establishing community development financial institution. So along with our partners, um, the Small Business Development Center, the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, and Network Kansas, we created a strong process to start putting out these, these loans. Um, that includes where businesses are able to fill out an inquiry form, we're able to answer their questions, direct them to the programs that they are eligible for, provide them with materials and information on each of the programs, but most importantly, we connect them to technical assistance. So anyone that is going through these loan application processes are working to, uh, with technical assistance partners to review their business plan, their financials, to put together application in a way that they're able to present that in a strong front, um, in front of a financial review board. The Financial Review Board is a seasoned and diverse review board that was recently expanded and meets regularly to, uh, to review applications and speak with the business owners that are applying. Um, as you can see, we're trying to track what that pipeline of activity is looking like, um, where we're directing those folks to, uh, the different loan programs. And we currently have two active Empower Funds, and then what you see on the screen there is two active Elevate Funds. And so we're starting to see more traction, and we have programs, um, alongside our partners that are starting to funnel more opportunities into these, uh, loan programs as well. So we anticipate that this is going to continue to grow, continue, continue to expand, and we're reporting that on a monthly basis, not only what that pipeline looks like, but also the impacts that it's having on these local businesses. So as we do this, we're also collaborating closely with, with our partners. You heard me mention before the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, and the, the Kansas Small Business Development Center, Network Kansas. So we want to partner both regionally and statewide to start bringing additional programs and resources and assets to our community for entrepreneurs to access. One example of that, um, is here recently, the Small Business Administration had been running their Thrive Program initially out of Wichita. They're now running their cohort here in Manhattan and engaging Manhattan businesses. That is meant to help businesses grow through a strategic action plan of growth. Um, so we've seen more activity that has been emphasizing on the acti, on the different entrepreneurial and startup, um, endeavors that are happening in Manhattan. We're also building that, uh, that network stronger and broader than just the state, but across the nation, and engaging with other ecosystems, um, across the U.S. to understand what they're doing, what works, what doesn't, and what we can bring here that would be, uh, helpful for our entrepreneurs in, in gaining new resources and acts, and assets. But of course, the, the movie might say, if you build it, they will come. Um, I truly believe we have to be intentional with our efforts, and we need to cultivate startup activities. We can't just expect to build programs and hope that people will engage with that. Um, there's several efforts that we're doing to, to start cultivating that activity. One is creating both a virtual and physical front door into the startup ecosystem. Um, Spark now has a location in Aggieville, uh, the Small Business Development Center is co-locating with us, and that starts to build a hub of activity. Um, those two offices being located there, as well as space that is available to our partners to host programs, events, networking, and, and other beneficial, um, events for entrepreneurs, helps start bringing that activity together, bringing that, um, collaboration. Um, in addition, we're out there in community, talking to business groups, to, um, cohorts that exist, um, even getting on Fort Riley and talking to those that are transitioning soldiers, that are looking at starting up their own business, to let them know about what programs are available, how we can be assistance, and how we connect them. In addition to that, we also want to look at how do we start putting that additional highlight on the activity happening here in Manhattan by engaging with other activities happening even across the world. So Spark Labs Cultivate is, is an accelerator program out of, um, Australia that works with ag tech startup companies that are expanding not there, but also wanting to enter the U.S. market. So how we build out our, our programs, our intentionality, is to make sure that we're also creating a platform that is accessible for our startups, for our small businesses, and is attractive for folks to want to come and land here and engage with our community. Um, in addition, folks like Firebrand is a venture capitalist out of Kansas City that saw that there is activity happening in Manhattan, reached out, and they've started connecting within our entrepreneurial community to start bringing capital, um, to invest in those types of opportunities. So that active engagement is starting to take that momentum and bring that forward. Of course, we want to keep insight the big picture. What are we, what are, what are their impacts? What are we doing? Um, and that's really, how do we create new businesses? How do we create new jobs? And how do we bring new investment into the community? So those are the items that we're tracking alongside these activities. Um, and as I mentioned before, that strong partnership with the Small Business Development Center, this activity's been going on for a while. Um, the Small Business Development Center is very active and continues to be very engaged, um, in the ecosystem. So you can see how that has turned into, um, serving clients, bringing new capital impact, and, and contributing to that full ecosystem together as that collaborative effort. So I want to pause there and see if I, if you guys have any questions, because I know I usually speed through things pretty quick.
Is the capital impact, is that basically any type of investment that a business that's worked with the SBDC has been able to bring in?
Right, exactly.
And training hours, is that hours spent by the Development Center training business owners?
That would be, so client contact hours would be one-on-one consulting. The training hours would be like through a business basics course, or something where was, uh, putting together an actual, uh, educational program.
Okay. So just in this year, we've had far fewer training hours, but a lot more investment. How, um, how like spread apart is that, or how much, is that like one major capital investment, or how many clients have received capital impact?
So that would be a question for the Small Business Development Center, so I can follow up on that for sure. Um, I would note that our business advisor joined in 2023, so you can see that he was onboarding during that year, and then has now had more significant impact in these first several months of the year.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm pleased to introduce one of our partners and collaborators in the entrepreneurial ecosystem. Um, she's been doing a lot of amazing work, uh, in helping entrepreneurs, um, with the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, so Sheila Ellis Glasper.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, um, and Mayor. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I think I had a couple of slides up here. And get started. Um, I just wanted to reiterate our mission as an organization, um, in the work that we're doing. And so our mission is to narrow the racial wealth gap by engaging, empowering, and equipping Black socially and economically disadvantaged entrepreneurs to build sustainable enterprises, um, generational wealth through culturally responsive business training, resources, technical assistance, and access to capital. Um, and so we are really proud that we have been able to grant actually 25 businesses in our local area with vital grant funding to help these businesses to grow, um, including investing in credit repair, licensing, accounting, marketing, and branding, professional services, and equipment needs. Um, we've also added a new page to our website. It's just blackflinthills.com and backslash grantees, and you can find every single business that we've granted, um, in this past year, since we started grants. And, um, you would see exactly what they've been able to do and the impact that they've made in their business, um, with these grants. And so, so far, we have granted $65,100 in grants to locally-owned businesses here in the Flint Hills area. Um, we actually had to add that up, and it was pretty incredible. Um, we have a quick video, because, um, our businesses can tell it better than I can, and the impact is just one moment, um, and so I'm going to go ahead and share that here. Hopefully it plays. Maybe. I might need sound. Will it get sound? Thank you. So basically, Marlon Watson, he's the owner of Companion Projects Media. Um, he's talking about how a micro grant of $1,500, how it helped his company. Um, he is a Manhattan native and a homeowner here in the Flint Hills, as well as a business owner. Hopefully, we can hear him. There you go.
I don't know. No, I'm sorry. I don't know why this isn't working.
Okay. We, we've been here for a while tonight, so we won't, um, we won't stress on that if we can't hear.
It's just coming out of the computer, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Um, so I'll just talk while the video is showing, but essentially what Marlon is showing here is that he was able to invest in a storage, um, a video storage unit, essentially that helped him to back up all the files for his clients. He does work for a lot of locally-owned businesses here, real estate companies, as well as construction companies, um, a lot of local businesses that he captures, um, their stories, um, here in the Flint Hills region. Um, and his $1,500 grant allowed him to back up all this actual storage, um, of those files, so that he could keep that safe for his clients. Um, if he did not have this drive, or this grant, it would have taken him quite a while to just be able to kind of save that money up so that he could offer a higher-quality service, um, which also impacts other businesses in the Flint Hills. And so he's just kind of giving a shout-out, um, to BFH, um, for the grant and how that's been able to help him grow. So that's just one example of how a small amount that seems small, $1,500, and how it can actually make a big impact for businesses. All right. And so also, we wanted to update you all. Um, the Kansas Health Foundation Building Power and Equity Partnership, um, the Kansas Health Foundation invested in 30 grassroots nonprofit organizations across the state of Kansas. Um, we are proud to be one of them. On this map, you can kind of see those different organizations. Um, it's a total of $1 million commitment to Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills over 10 years. Um, this funding is really vital and crucial to our organization to build capacity, um, as well as sustainable programming, and being able to increase our collaboration with these other organizations that are all working to build racial equity in their communities. Um, this grant helped us big time when it came to capacity. We once were an all-volunteer organization, um, spending lots of hours, uh, doing this work in the community. Um, this grant allowed us to hire a program and community coordinator, who's here tonight, uh, Ms. Andrea Young, um, as well as it allowed me to move over as staff two to executive director. Um, as well as it allowed me to move over as staff two to executive director. Um, we were able to hire three interns this summer, all K-State students, um, as well as contractors, um, to hire attorneys and accountants, um, on retainer to help us um, grow as an organization. So this has been very crucial for our organization. Also, update on National League of Cities. Thank you again to City of Manhattan for partnering with us on this. Um, this is our second year in the, um, cities on inclusive entrepreneurial program. City Inclusive Entrepreneurial Program. Um, it has allowed us to do, uh, launch our Commerce Uplift Program, which is a twelve-week business training program through the Kaufman Foundation. So we are really proud, um, to be able to launch that training, um, through this grant. It was a fifteen thousand dollar grant. Uh, we were also able to do technical assistance grants for our businesses coming through our cohort. Also, we'll have a pitch competition and graduation celebration on September fifth of this year. Currently, we have twenty-two students enrolled in this class. Um, and it is building, um, a pipeline to the Elevate and Empower funding that my colleague Stephanie, uh, just mentioned. And so, kind of showing off our cohort here, we're really proud of them. Um, these entrepreneurs have businesses ranging from childcare to indoor storage, beauty and wellness, um, digital marketing agency, real estate agents, artists, and mental health professionals. So they all are businesses that are currently operating here in the Flint Hills. Also, some of these businesses are state, K-State grads. Um, one recently graduated from K-State. Many of them are military connected, whether they are actually active duty, um, spouses, or actually, um, veterans and decided to stay here in the area. Um, we're also multi-generational. And so we're really proud of this cohort and being able to be, right now, one of the only ESOs in our region that's offering the Kaufman Fast Track Training. Um, and so, when it comes to the work that's being done, um, with our organization, um, Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, um, having this cohort and helping these businesses to start with the right foundation. Um, also, many of our businesses, in general, don't start with a business plan. And when you go to, um, actually go up for funding, whether it's through a bank or our community loan funds, that is one of the first things that's needed is a business plan, financial projections. So the goal is, is to be able to keep graduating cohorts where they will graduate with a strong business plan, financial projections, um, and be able to access capital, grow, um, create jobs in the area, um, and make an impact ultimately. So, finally, of course, how do you get involved? Um, of course, follow us on social media. We're on all platforms. Our Black Business Directory is there as a resource for the community to know where our businesses are and how to, um, be intentional about that support. Um, and so I just wanted to thank you all for your partnership, um, as well as thanking the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, Spark, MHK, the Small Business Development Center, and all of our programs, um, and partners who are investing in equitable and inclusive entrepreneurship. Um, finally, we do have an event coming up next month. It's actually National Black Business Month. Um, Governor Laura Kelly did a proclamation last year, um, pronouncing August as National Black Business Month. So we have our melanin market, indoor market happening at the Union Hall. So it's a nice chance to get a peek at the newly renovated Union Hall downtown. Um, it's next Saturday from three-thirty to seven PM. We'll have live music, over twenty vendors, food. So we invite you all out to participate, and if anybody has any questions, I'll take that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Awesome, thank you.
So, real quick, uh, you all have the summary of our funding request. Uh, we do each year provide what we're gonna spend the funds for. And, uh, and we present to you the, you can, uh, the, uh, income statement, uh, for the organization each month. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions.
I mean, Jason, you know what my question might be. Um, I'm really wanting to know maybe more consistent measurable data that we're looking for within the community. This has kind of been a thing I've spoke about a lot, just whether that's population target, job targets, and I think, um, you know, maybe there has been direction in the past, but just wanting to know what that target is, so we're all moving there and that we're, we're making those, those incremental gains. And so I, I think that's, that's just a big discussion for me on, on this.
Yep, and I, and I think our leadership feels the same way. It's why we've engaged with the growth strategy, because I think we're gonna be very specific and we've asked for sort of very specific goals and objectives based on where we should be, right? I mean, you, you, there's, there's a point that it's too much, right? There's a point that it's not enough. So what, what's the right number? And then let's all work towards that. Um, and so, yes, what, that's, our leadership is expecting the same thing, and so hopefully we can provide that this fall.
Yeah, and I think just a collaborative.
Provide a suggestion.
I wouldn't say suggestion, and then making that measurable. And so I don't know that we have to have, personally, I don't have to have these like super, you know, all of these different measures and stuff. I think keeping it high level and then making sure we're working together towards those, um, and have kind of an understanding of, as the contracted entity, where our plan is to get here, here, and, you know, here, and be able to measure that over time. And, and I think we all realize economic development's not gonna, it doesn't, it's not one fiscal year to get it done. But I, I think it's that progressive target and, and putting it out there. For, for me, that's population, but I think, um, jobs, employment.
Wages.
Wages. And, and those are just, i- if those are the targets we want to agree on and that you guys are going there, we just need to have those laid out. Um, that, I mean, saying that, yeah, you guys are the contracted one, but I think keeping that in mind, um, in the future so that we can look at that.
Thank you for those comments. I think that's the direction we plan to go.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, one similar question, just kind of like, how do we, how do we track success for economic development? Um, and I think, you know, even if we just have a thermometer up, you know, on the website or something like that, um, you know, everybody wants to know what's our return on investment and how do we track that, so, um. Another, uh, question I had was kind of more, I think Stephanie and, and Sheila really, um, hit on it a lot, was how do we? What, what effort are we putting into local investment, you know? Uh, and specifically, how do we turn some of our smaller employers into primary employers? Um, I think really we can get the best bang for our buck out of that and have a really great, uh, connection to the community. You know, that we, you see with, with, uh, with Caterpillar, like, it's now, i- it, it was a great primary employer, but it, it's, they don't, they're not connected to One Migo, right? Um, so how do we, how do we kind of work on that?
Yeah, so, um, I think, and we've talked before about, I think the number one thing from any government that a community can do long-term is work on entrepreneurship, because those, and you, and you look around the community and you see the employers, the largest employers, employers most involved in philanthropy, most involved in the community. They're the businesses that, that are either locally owned or were started by somebody local. And so, we're very serious about it. That was part of the Regent Reimagine Strategy, and so I, I thank you for saying that. I think one of the things that we did, and I didn't really talk about it here, but, but for a variety of reasons, the decision was made in twenty that instead of the chamber doing that, or nineteen, instead of the chamber taking all that, um, under its umbrella, that we would have, we would establish this nonprofit that would combine the best of everything, right? So, so public dollars, private dollars, entrepreneurs, and, and we'd gather it all in one area and, and have this sort of movement where entrepreneurs are promoting entrepreneurship and you get, and you get the ecosystem, and that's how Spark was created. Um, and, and we're optimistic about where that's headed, uh, not just with Stephanie's leadership, but, but we revamped that board. And there are some really strong, business-oriented, entrepreneurial-minded people on that board. And, uh, and so I'm very excited about where, what our chances are to see some po- real positive momentum in there. And of course, um, everything Sheila's doing is, is incredible. I'm, I'm, I've had the opportunity to be in Leadership Kansas this year, and everywhere I go across the state, you know, people know Sheila, know what she's doing. And so I think we're very fortunate to have her here doing all the things she's working on, too.
Absolutely. Um, another question, so we talked about training medical professionals, but how are we, um, or is the chamber involved in attracting and retaining, uh, those doctors and the, you know, physicians and things like that?
So, um, I, I can find out specific what the programs are, but, but typically what we see are the providers manage the recruitment of doctors. So Stormont Vale is recruiting doctors and, and Ascension, and and all those entities are recruiting doctors. We, we stand in support of them to provide all the tools they need to make Manhattan look the most attractive that we can. We have not taken an active role. We've not been asked by the medical community to take an active role in that. I think they want to control their own, their own efforts, but, but they're aware of what we do. We provide tours for doctors if that's what they want. We, you know, we obviously have a lot of different information that they, they give to their prospective doctors that sell the community on, not just to the doctor, but to their family. And so right now, that's the role that we're in. Uh, we could do more if that's what they want us to do, but they, that's not what they've indicated right now.
And is that just kind of a, a symptom of the industry overall, where, you know, you're not just gonna go and open your own private physician practice anymore?
It's, it's my understanding, I'm not a medical expert, my understanding is it's just gotten so complicated that, um, that you're just seeing doctors associate with larger entities to do the billing and do all the, all the things that are required to run the backend of the operation. And so that's where, that's what the trend I think is. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not the expert in this. I'm just what, what I hear, hear from other people, so.
Thank you.
There we go. I think mine's for Jason Hilders. Jason, the economic development portion of the sales tax that we're, that the chamber is contracted out of, what else are we using that twenty percent?
Historically, we've paid a couple of different staff members from that. Um, so for twenty-twenty-three and for twenty-twenty-four, uh, we can, we have a balance of about one point six million. I can show you that breakdown. You wanna see that now?
I mean, I'm just, I, I think we have to, when we're approving things, just looking at how else that money's being spent. So, th- the chamber contract is four hundred and eighty-five of, uh, that one point six. And so that leaves us about one point one left. I don't know how much the city, um, salaries.
I think we take, I think we take military out of that too, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so it'd be the five.
Oh, sorry. Listen, it said four eighty-five, and it's eight twenty-two PM on a ticket.
I know, I know.
In, in twenty-three, we transferred two hundred thousand for our city staff contribution. And then, uh, this year so far, we pulled a hundred thousand. So it's a three hundred thousand total for city staff on top of the, just over the million dollars for chamber the last two years.
And, am I understanding, Jason, that, that's where incentives would come from as well, correct? If we, if we had an incentive.
That twenty percent.
That, I mean, that, that's part of the discussion we're wanting to have, so that, the plan would be to chamber collaboration and using that for.
For, hopefully, as we discussed with the Medifab, you know, the, the success we had working on direct jobs projects, we'd like to see more of those.
Do you have it, Rena?
Um, I just, I wanted to also add that we also have the Manhattan Area Technical College agreement for that Advanced Tech Center coming out of there as well.
Oh, that, isn't that, is that two hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, and I did, I do think in twenty-three, we pulled Ata Bus out of there as well.
Yeah.
We moved it to the General Fund for twenty-four. Some of that discussion came up the other night, too, uh, a few weeks ago, just about where, where y'all wanna fund that.
Great, now I really know how much is coming out of that. There were so many numbers that we just threw around.
I, we have a little spreadsheet created, if you'd like to see it.
I don't, I don't know, we, if we have to see that tonight, we've still
Okay.
got time for the, all the other entities when we're looking at it, but, okay.
In August thirteenth, we plan to bring a lot of this back up.
Okay.
From a transient gas tax and our, uh, our one, our half-cent sales tax.
Perhaps that, um, spreadsheet can be put into our mail folder.
You bet.
I think, I think as I mentioned, I think a few months ago when I testified, the language in the ballot specifically referenced jobs and jobs initiatives, so, um, that for the twenty percent.
Other questions for Jason?
I, I will ask Christian Bishop to come up and talk about military.
Thank you, Sheila.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Um, as Jason said, my name is Christian Bishop, and I'm the Military Relations Manager for the Manhattan Area Chamber. Um, I just want to start off by, um, of course, going over our mission, and of course, the purpose of the Manhattan Military Relations. Um, and that is to support economic development by planning and executing programs that strengthen Manhattan's relationship with Fort Riley and through CCA, so connections creating and advocating. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the CCA, so, um, connecting businesses and community leadership, um, with Fort Riley um, to collaborate and achieve defined program objectives, create a welcoming, um, environment for service members and their families to call home. Um, and we say regardless of it, it's their home for two years, or if it's their home for the rest of their life. Um, ensuring what we can do to make sure that, um, they call this place home. Uh, if they do choose to leave, uh, through different duty stations, um, the important thing that we try and advocate for um, is for them to tell the story about how much Manhattan in the Flint Hills, um, was the best home, their best duty station. And then, of course, advocate, um, on behalf of, uh, Fort Riley to grow their mission. Um, so just, um, some important things. I call it the why. Um, why do we have, um, why do we want to do this? Why do we continue to do this? And I'll start from the top, um, and the top is that, um, the economic impact for last year was one point nine, uh, one point nine-eight billion dollars. Um, and comparing that to fiscal year nineteen, so five years ago, that was actually an increase of two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Um, and then just last year, um, that was an increase of a hundred and three million dollars of what, uh, Fort Riley's economic impact was. And if you, um, do the congressional budget, so the CBO, which is a two point two to, uh, two point two dollars to one, um, the actually economic impact is actually four point three billion dollars of what Fort Riley brings to this, uh, um, to Flint Hills. Um, the operation tempo is something that, you know, we often talk about. So, um, Jason mentioned earlier that, um, a couple of years ago, Fort Riley lost a brigade. Um, and so, Fort Riley is a very fast, uh, operation, uh, with a bunch of tr- rapid transitions and, of course, deployments. Um, and so just with that, um, we always say, you know, you hear the sounds of freedoms, and then sometimes you hear me briefing the county that, um, uh, brigade is deployed, and you're like, why are we still hearing booms? Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, there's actually twenty thousand, uh, re- uh, reserve and guard members that train on the installation a year. So that's continuing soldiers, um, and manpower that may spend their weeks, um, and maybe nights on Fort Riley, but they do go out to the community, um, use our hotels, eat our food, um, use our target, and just some of those things. Um, Fort Riley's population, um, just in the Manhattan metro area, is, uh, twelve, uh, twelve point five thousand people. And, um, just with that, there's also, excuse me, turn my page, sorry. Um, and that also equates to the fact that the total population on Fort Riley is fifty-nine thousand. So that includes, um, service members living on post, service members living off post, our veterans and retirees, and then, of course, the civ- civilian workforce that makes that, uh, four thousand nine hundred people. Um, and also with that, I'd like to just mention, um, that transitioning soldiers is something that we work hard on. Um, they have about twenty-four, um, two point four thousand soldiers transitioning out. Um, and every year, uh, Fort Riley and, uh, Kansans retain about ten to twelve percent of them. Um, and so some of the questions would be, why? Um, of course, housing, um, is always an issue, childcare, um, and then the other one is just, um, spouse employment. So there's been some initiatives that we've done during advocating to help retain the spouse, um, because, you know, you always live a happy spouse, happy life. Uh, and then I did forget, and the economic impact, um, that two things that were, um, very important. Um, out of that one point nine, uh, billion dollars, uh, veterans expenditures, it was increased by sixteen point four percent. So veterans, uh, their expenditures in the community was forty-two point nine million dollars. And the economic impact from healthcare and the healthcare networks. So ultimately, um, service members that are choosing or needing to go off the installation was sixty-eight million dollars. So just some things that we do, um, connecting, so every month, um, except for the months of January and July, we do host a monthly, um, lunch. So it's an opportunity. we do host a monthly, um, lunch. So it's an opportunity for, um, community leaders, community members. Um, it is open to everybody to get out and hear different topics that relate to, um, not only Fort Riley, but, um, also all of our military entities. So, um, sometimes K-State ROTC will come give updates. Um, and we also, um, invite the National Guard, um, that does have their armory here to give, um, updates as well. The Little Apple Brigade hosted two events, uh, one in the spring and one in the fall, and we welcomed four new members. Uh, we continue to advocate, um, for Made for Manhattan. Um, and I mentioned last year that we had just launched our Military Connect page, um, which just allows ser- ser- uh, service members and families to learn about the community. Um, I was happy and eager to hear that the new Garrison Commander, um, while he was waiting for his housing to get, um, here and also for his home to become available, um, he was actually, him and his wife were staying at Airbnb, um, just two blocks away. And I went to Tom, I was like, well, we have the Made for Manhattan page. And he was like, I've already been to it. You know, he'd already been in the community out and, and has had nothing but great things to say. Uh, and then of course, uh, collaborate, um, with Allison Talent Strategies Manager. Um, and we have attended, um, hiring fairs that equate to almost 800 transitioning service members and their families and opportunity to explore options post-service. Um, so not only just job employment, but also offering, um, M A T C and K-State. Um, and one of those programs is the Keep Tour that we host every year. Um, the hopes that connecting the military members here to participate in our chamber programs, um, with our initiatives such as hype, business after hours, good morning in Manhattan, is that one, like I said, it gives them that connection that when it is time for them to, uh, hang up their service uniform and choose a different life, that they are choosing here and that they're already embedded in the community. Um, so how do we create welcoming fam- uh, welcoming community? So, um, Victory Welcome is an opportunity every Wednesday that Fort Riley hosts, um, that they bring new coming service members and their families there. Um, I say the morning part is kind of a death by PowerPoint of all the services that Fort Riley, um, offers. But, um, there is a time in the afternoon where they allow community members, um, to come and actually talk about their community. Um, businesses are welcome to come. And this is where I actually, um, leverage our CVB department, um, by getting them out with different events that, um, not only have going on in this, but we also give them the visitor guide. Um, and then maps of the local communities, just so they kind of know what are some of those big transitional, um, things. So I often explain when you're driving down Tuttle Creek Boulevard, it might turn into Fort Riley Boulevard or, um, that Anderson, uh, turns into Blumott. So just simple things. Um, I know that everybody has GPS, but it's not always a reliable thing. Uh, another thing that we do is, uh, last week, we actually hosted our 17th Annual Military Appreciation Night. So we served over 300 military family members, um, for dinner, um, and thanks to our sponsors who, uh, make this happen. But we also gave away 1,500 tickets, um, for service members and veterans, um, to be able to enjoy the community. Um, and as you guys probably saw, uh, Gary Fike had mentioned that this was probably one of the busiest, uh, Riley County fairs that, um, the community had seen in a long time. We continue to partner with K-State, um, providing just different quality of life opportunities. So this year we partnered, um, with K-State for the K-State rodeo. Um, of course, Fort Riley Day or, um, football, Fort Riley Day for baseball. Um, and then, uh, different McCain Theater experiences. Um, so giving them the, our options for those who just aren't, um, who don't necessarily bleed purple like the rest of us. Um, and then this year's Veterans Day Parade had one of the largest of people actually participating, um, in the Veterans Day Parade that we had seen in the last 10 years. Um, so just some things that we do to advocate. Um, and so every year, uh, we do go to DC for the, um, AUSA Convention, uh, where usually the priorities of the Army are set. Um, and then we have a chance to advocate on, on behalf of Fort Riley. So just a couple of things that we continue to advocate for them for, as mentioned, um, is the railhead barracks. Um, and then of course, just letting them know, um, what the operation tempo does to not only this community, but to family members, um, who might get here and then all of a sudden their service member is gone for nine months. And that doesn't include the, uh, the additional trainings in the field and us at the NTC Center at Fort Irwin. Um, the Governor's Military Council allows us to give the input, um, and recommendations that affect service members and families. So a couple of initiatives have been, um, to advocate on behalf of Gold Star Family Members. Uh, recently, this past legislation system or term, um, the House and the Senate and Governor Kelly passed, um, House Bill 2745, which just exempted spouses and service members, um, from having to pay those additional licensing and registration and certifications. Uh, there are some contingencies for that. So of course their license and registration had to be current. And they had to have worked, um, at least one year, um, in that state where, um, they were transferring their license for. Um, and then just other different initiatives that we do, um, advocate for is Stephanie mentioned is veterans, uh, the Flint Hills Veterpreneur Foundation, Operation Green Light, and then the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation that has over 28 military nonprofit organizations. Um, and so Armed Forces Day, um, Armed Forces is one of the huge advocates for that. Um, and then with that being said, you know, we just continue to advocate. Um, one of the things that was kind of hashtagged a couple of years ago, um, by Major General Sims, um, was that we are not the center of nothing, but we are the center of everything. So just continuing that avocation, um, that, you know, we are, we are the best and people want to deploy, return home too. And with that, I will reserve questions.
Thank you, Christian.
And I will now turn it over to Marsha Rozell.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Marsha Rozell, Director of Visit Manhattan. Glad to be here with you tonight. This is our mission statement. We are to, we work to expand the local economy with outside visitor dollars. As per our contract with the city, we have a steering committee to advise us on the use of the transient guest tax. That's the TGT we've talked about tonight already. Scott Seeben, the owner of Mr. K's Rockin' K's and Kites is our chairman and unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight as we changed.
Marsha, can you just pick one, uh, mic or the other?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Uh, Scott Seeben is the owner and he's the chairman of our steering committee, couldn't be with us tonight as we changed meeting nights. Um, those who serve on the committee represent our hospitality industry with attractions, hotels, restaurant, retails, and other local businesses. We have members also from K-State with hospitality department and athletics. And I want to give a shout out to one of our hotel GMs that's here in the audience with us tonight. The committee meets every other month. We actually have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we have lively discussions on our budget and how the TGT, where and how it is used and how we accomplish our mission of bringing more visitors to Manhattan. So what does the CVB do? This is a question I get asked regularly by family and friends. The CVB is staffed by tourism professionals. We think about the visitor all the time. We market, promote, sell, respond, welcome, connect, collaborate, and provide necessary market research. What we do also improves the quality of life for our residents here in Manhattan. That community benefit, the community benefits from the work we do. We tout not only chamber members, but because we are paid with the TGT transient guest tax, tax dollars, we promote all businesses that are open to visitors. We have direct contact with our state tourism office. Um, and just an example is we contract with a distribution company to get our visitors guides out among the I-70 corridor from St. Louis to Eastern Colorado. Uh, we get strong lifting those boxes and getting them out, uh, to our, to our visitors. We promote all over Kansas and the Midwest. And one example of that is our Good Day Kansas segments we just had. Um, they were shown in Western Kansas and then posted on social media. We featured the Flint Hills Discovery Center, the Sunset Zoo, the Midwest Dream Car Collection, and the Kansas State Insect Zoo. I included this slide because this is a statement from the city's, um, 24 budget book. And I just wanted you to have that at your fingertips. Regarding the CVB budget, um, every month you receive our chamber packet, which includes our financials for each month. Um, I wasn't going to go over this slide. Obviously it's way too small to see. But I'm a very visual person. And so because of that, this is a visual representation of our budget. 44% of our budget is spent on marketing Manhattan. 41% of our budget is spent on employees and we have five full-time employee equivalents. There are three of us dedicated to tourism and then we pay a third of six others in the chamber staff. And keep in mind that our employees are always working on Manhattan, marketing Manhattan. Smith Travel Research provides us with the best data on how our 13 hotel properties are performing and our key indicators of the number of visitors sleeping in our, in our hotels. Our monthly occupancy, um, for June is 61.1%. Year-to-date occupancy, this is the trend over the year. Um, it's at 56.5%. This shows how Manhattan compares to the rest of the state. That's that first column there. That's all of Kansas. Um, and then six other communities that we compare ourselves with. Our 56.5% year-to-date occupancy is just a tad above the state's occupancy, which is over the, uh, 47,000 rooms. And just so you note, below each number is the number of hotel rooms in each of the communities. And we have 1,297 rooms in Manhattan. Currently, our average daily rate for a hotel room is 1, 111 dollars and 50 cents. This is $5 up over June of 2023. The revenue is at 15.4 million to date, resulting in about 1.2 million in transient guest tax collections year-to-date. And just a reminder, our TGT is at 7.5% here in Manhattan. And so thinking back to the communities we compare ourselves to, um, that varies from Lawrence is the, is the smallest percentage at 6% and Overland Park is at 9%.
Marsha, what was that daily rate, average daily rate?
111 dollars and 50 cents. Air DNA is our report for short-term rentals. Think Airbnbs, VBROs. Um, occupancy year-to-date was 53.7% for June and a 45% year-to-date average, so less than our hotels.
Oh, real quick, I just want to confirm.
Sure.
So, uh, properties that are registered with like Airbnb and VRBO, they do pay transient guest tax, correct?
Correct, correct. That has been a change since 2017.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, this is the revenue for, from Air DNA reports. A year-to-date collection of over 3 million uh, results in a TGT collection of 227,820 dollars to date. Our team is working hard to get meetings and sporting events booked and we're just halfway through the year. Most of the meetings that will take place will take place in the next three to five years. Most of the sporting events tend to be within this calendar year. And I just want to publicly thank Jen Ali, who's our convention sales manager, and Lauren Chard, who's our sports sales manager. They work hard daily to market and sell Manhattan, um, to those meeting and sports planners. This is the number of meetings that were held in the second quarter. We were up with 50 meetings. You can see what 2020 was like. Um, and Jen is doing well with booking meeting business for the future. So this is not necessarily things that will happen in a second quarter, but they were booked in the second quarter. This is a highlight of the meetings that were held in that second quarter, just a list of them. Some of these are repeat business. Some of these are on a rotation, coming to Manhattan every few years. And some are what we consider a one-off and not likely to come back anytime soon. This is sporting events held in the second quarter and they were strong. And Lauren has done well in her role. Um, the increase in the number of events include K-State home games that we are now tracking. And we're very conservative with the attendance number, only counting the visiting team, not their fan base.
So, um, when we're talking like a tournament or something like that, we're just, we're just talking about the athletes that are coming in, not their families and things like that?
Well, so, so for K-State, that's true.
Okay.
For youth sports, no, we figure 1.75 people come for a youth that, because a lot of times, I mean, families come with them. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and these were three sporting highlights from May and June. Uh, we celebrated the 10th anniversary of the Bill Snyder Highway Half. It's amazing that it's been 10 years already. We had 3A State Baseball and the Doc Dogs Little Apple Splash, Splash had their second year here. Sunflower Summer launched in May, uh, it was May 25th. This is a program that the Kansas Department of Education ran for three years and just this year, it's the fourth year that Kansas Tourism has taken over this project. And then we here in Manhattan, we work together to create a Manhattan passport to encourage visitation at all seven of our Manhattan attractions. And we're giving away weekly prizes to those who turn in at least six of the seven, because we know that the Tuttle Creek State Park, sometimes their office is closed and it's a little harder to get out there. So at least if six of seven holes, holes have been punched on your passport, you're eligible for the drawing. And on the, um, day after the end, which the end is August the 11th, on August the 12th, we're going to draw for 100 Little Apple dollars. Uh, so we encourage everybody to get their passports turned in. You can get them at any of the attractions and it's free and you don't, you can be any age to get a passport. We conducted a strategic plan as we were transitioning the new director in late 20, uh, 2022. Uh, there's five objectives that guide our direction for the next few years. And I just kind of wanted to go over each of those fairly quickly. So a lot of, lot of text on this chart, but marketing and meeting relationships. Uh, we've accomplished to check off a few of these. One highlight this quarter was a media event with Kansas Tourism. They brought in four travel writers who covered the north central region of Kansas. Uh, that was in Min May and I was fortunate to accompany them on their stay. When you think about good media coverage, it's a combination of earned media. So that's media stories. Paid media, which is bought editorials, billboards, uh, brochure distributions. Owned media, which is our website and our emails that we send out in e-newsletters. And we send it out both to the leisure traveler, the meeting travel, uh, planner and sports planner. And then shared media, which is blogs and social media. Group business development, that's our, really our bread and butter of tourism here in Manhattan. We focus on attracting those meetings and sporting events. And you'll notice I circled the sports marketing study. I'm moving forward with getting bids on a sport assessment that would clarify the types of sporting events that would match our market. And under project development, um, these are some of the things that are led by the chamber, their initiatives and are getting accomplished by the economic development team. It's one of the many benefits of having tourism, the tourism department with the chamber. And it's that collaboration that happens internally. And you'll note the performance venue analysis is circled and that's part of that sport assessment study that we're looking at. Hospitality industry workforce, again workforce is a continuing focus of the chamber. Uh, we're providing the complimentary Treat 'Em Right online training for frontline employees and you can find that on our website. Advocacy for local, the local travel industry. Communications with our hospitality industry is paramount. Sustainable, um, sustainability of the travel industry is important and partnerships are critical. Um, and I appreciate the solid partnerships that we've had between the different departments of the city, uh, K-State and Fort Riley.
Marsha, when you talk about the local travel industry,
Mm-hmm.
Who, what does that encompass?
So you think about your attractions, your restaurants, retail, and lodging. Uh, we're working on developing more CBB educational materials so that the public does know what we do and how we are a vital resource for Manhattan. And I want to invite you all to our Second Annual Manhattan Hospitality Celebration, which will be on November 11th. And we're hosting it from 3:00 to 5:00 at Sunset Zoo. So as Jason stated at the beginning of our presentation tonight, that this is our budget request. It's the 1.65 million. It is the historic rate of the 60% of the anticipated TGT collections for 2025. And then I also added that our office stands ready to assist with the downtown parking garage situation as you all see fit for 2025. I wanted to leave you with just a few of our new billboards. Our Find Your Manhattan Happiness campaign is certainly grabbing the travelers' attention. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So what's your plan with the extra $300,000?
It'll go into marketing Manhattan. So a lot like that, uh, visual of our budget, it will go into the marketing piece of our budget.
How do you track return on investment on that?
So there's a lot of, if we go back to that one slide where we, let me just pull it back up. Talk about what we do. There it is. So when we, when I look at our marketing budget, I look at digital versus print, and I have certainly moved a lot more to the digital piece. And so, uh, every one of those, uh, digital, whether we do it on a specific leisure or a sports or a meeting planner's, um, purview of, of, of attracting them, uh, we try, I try to allocate those amounts out. We look at the number of impressions, and I think I had that on one of the slides that we were at, 1.67 million impressions on our digital marketing.
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna piggyback on, on Peters. I don't know if we were going there. I think like the discussion we had about kind of that bigger goal, and I, I don't know if, how you're gauging. I know we see some numbers of like how many things have been booked, and
Right.
we've talked about occupancy rates and those things. What are those achievable goals that you're, you're trying to hit? Like what are those number goals that you're?
Sure, and that's in our business plan, and I did not bring
Okay.
tonight. So we do have some measurable, um, goals with our number of leads, number of bookings, number of room nights that are in that, and I
And then is that adjusted for the additional request? Does that make sense?
Sure. I mean, it, well, it's all, so that's been, been our business plan for last year, and so we'll project for this next year what would increase due to the increase in the, the funds that are, that are given.
Okay.
Um, with your, uh, sports venue analysis, are you going to work with Parks and Rec on that at all?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, and Erin does sit on our steering committee.
Yeah. Um, so we've had some, we've had quite a few requests for increases. Um, one comes to mind specifically is from downtown Manhattan. Um, is there opportunity for some collaboration?
Always, always. So one of the things that I know, um, that we, that we have to invest heavily in is photography and video. I mean, that's just not one of those inexpensive things to do. And I know we make our photography available to downtown, to Aggieville, you know, to the different entities that, that also have, um, asked for, for budget requests.
Would you help them pay for a new website?
Actually, you know, years ago, that was a thought that we had was, was we have so many websites, and we want to always keep targeting the visitor to, to get to the right space, but I'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
So, and Marsha, I know we exchanged some emails, and, um, it is, it is a big jump in the request. Um, I think I have some concerns about the projection, um, of TGT funds. Uh, and I know we spoke, like, K-State doesn't have a seventh home game this year.
Right.
Um, and looking at who is traveling, some teams don't travel as well. I think that was a great point. So I think personally I just have some concerns with, with the projection. Um, and also just, I think that plus occupancy rates, they're, they're better than 2022. So right, they're between 2022 and 2023, and 2023 was, I think, just everyone is ready to go out and do some things.
Yes.
Um, not seeing that flow over to additional sales tax revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think we're keeping the TGT funds higher because of the, of the average daily rate increasing a little. So I'm saying all this just so you have my mindset of like, of when we're going into it. Um, I think I would, and wherever we end up on it all, but I mean, I think I would be more comfortable if those occupancy rates were continuing to increase or stay at that. I don't, and I don't know what that benchmark, um, hopeful
We would all love it to be 100%.
We would all love, yes, we would.
Right, yeah.
And I saw, and I appreciate you sending over the report, the like daily.
Yeah, weekly, weekly occupants.
Weekly, that was, there were some big numbers in that. Um, but I think just
And just so you know, that's shared with all of our steering committee as well on a, on, on a monthly basis.
Yeah. So, I mean, just wishing that they were higher because it can, you know, I'm thinking more people staying in those, that's
Sure.
additional sales tax revenue. Um, and so when we're looking at things and, and, I mean, TGT, yes, it's used for tourism. I think we have, um, some things that could fall into that. So when we're looking at everything, it's, um, I get there's some divisions, but it's one, one, one big
Mm-hmm.
pot of money.
Um, Commissioners, I'd like to remind you that we're, by statute, we're meant to finish at nine if we need to make a motion to continue.
And just, just to, just to finish a little bit, is the, the anticipated TGT collections is determined by the city?
Oh, I'm aware.
Okay.
Just, just two quick things, real quick. Um, the way it happened in 20, and I would assume would be again, if the, if the funds come in below the projected amount, then we get less. So it's, it's been established that it's 60%.
Jason, can you approach the microphone?
I'm sorry, just, just for clarity, that, that if the funds come in less, in 2020 at least, we got less. Um, and then in terms of the questions about any, any, you know, how the funds are spent, again, I will, I will refer back to, we, we filter that through the CBB committee and would expect they would have an opinion on that, just because they have an opinion on usually those things. So, um, so I would expect if there's changes, that we'll hear from them and you'll hear from them as well, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have additional questions now? Jason, do you have an update for us this evening? Will we?
I don't know if you have public comment on this topic, but I would recommend, you know, another 20 minutes at least. Or 10, whatever you're comfortable with, Mayor.
I'm sorry, people, I'm, this, I've been fighting a headache tonight. I'm not firing on all cylinders here. Uh, is there a motion to extend the meeting, please?
Yeah, I'm over we extend our meeting for 20 minutes.
Second, oh, sorry, Karen.
Commissioner Opelt has, uh, Commissioner Opelt has made a motion to extend our meet, our work session an additional 20 minutes. Commissioner Minton, I believe,
Yeah.
reached the second. Uh, can you please take the roll?
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Chek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Would anyone who's present like to make public comment on what we've heard tonight on a very comprehensive presentation on the part of the chamber and its associated organizations and sub-organizations and spinoff organizations and partner organizations?
I don't have public comment, but I am hoarding sheets.
Um, seeing no public comment, I will ask interim city manager Jason Hilgers if he has any updates for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you've received a common consumption memo. If that's a topic you'd like us to jump into, please give us some feedback. AUSA, October 12th through the 14th?
16.
14th through the 16th, my bad. Um, if you have some interest, I know the chamber's looking to coordinate that here within the first, um, week or so of August.
I'm sorry, it's October, did you say?
Yeah, October 14th through the 16th. You can give us some feedback there.
Yep, and the state, um, meeting is once
Leah Kansas Municipality's meeting, I'll have to check.
It's on October.
Same time.
Oh, that, that conference, yes, it usually is.
In Wichita?
Yep.
It's October 10th through the 12th.
Yeah, it's, it's a
Couple of days before. Yep.
On common consumption, I was hoping we could have more of a discussion, but maybe in fall, like after we get through budget, if everyone's in agreement, and I appreciate the, you guys putting together that memo. Um, oh, sorry, Suzanne, keep on
Just, I would, I'd like to read and reflect on the memo, and I'd had some questions regarding its application across the city, and so I'd like to get a little more input on that. So if we could table that until
Yeah.
Fall.
Definitely open to it, though. Yeah.
Yeah, we can bring that back, October-ish, November-ish, after the budget's adopted.
Um, speaking of budget, and I know, uh, property tax has been a big discussion, you know, and we talked a lot about the, the potential sales tax question. I, I do think where we're at is needing, this is, you know, my opinion and discussion. I want to keep the conversation going, because I think there's a lot of momentum, and I don't want to slow things down on, on the Move MHK Master Plan, but hoping, um, yeah, hoping we can keep the, the conversations going, but potentially recognizing that this November is not a, a good time for a ballot question. Um, so I guess I just wanted to get that either, I don't want to say out of the way for it, but just keep the conversations going. I don't want to let it, um, stop in the conversations and lose momentum, but I'm just curious on thoughts for, for continuing that and giving some, the city, I'm assuming Jason and Erin needing maybe direction then on, on what we want to do, um, not tonight necessarily, but
I think on the, as per the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, um, they suggested additional study of possible locations for an aquatic center, uh, continuing to explore partnerships with the school district, possibly with the county, with K-State, private, uh, donors.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think, as you said, we, it would be feasible to, uh, continue those discussions and with the thought of either putting this on the ballot next year or, uh, doing a mail ballot.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way we can get it ready for November, because you have to have it to the, the county clerk by the 1st of September, and we're, we're just not there. I do think, um, it's something we should consider. I think there's a great need for indoor water, but only with partnerships with the school district and possibly K-State, that would be great. Um, and mail-in ballot is not that expensive when you think about, we're talking about a, building a 30, 40 million dollar, you know, structure, so.
50, 60 million.
Well, not if you do, add the
Yeah, with, with partnerships, private funding, capital plans.
Any other comments?
Appreciate that direction. We'll continue to, uh, work internally. Uh, I would anticipate at your retreat, uh, with the new city manager, starting 2025, it'll be a topic, we'll be looking for direction, work with Erin, and we'll try to get some updates and some scenarios and strategies put together for you all to consider.
Um, all right, with that, I would like to say thank you to chamber staff, support staff, everyone else who is here. As I indicated, these were excellent, uh, presentations, very comprehensive. So, and, and Sheila left already, but I, we, I was personally able to watch that video that she had embedded in her presentation. I think most of us had reviewed the materials prior to tonight, and we appreciate your reviewing them again with us. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll have my sheet.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Minton has made a motion to adjourn our, our work session. Commissioner Opelt has seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Chek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, the meeting is, uh, is adjourned.